Hour of 5:30 having come, we will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, November 10, 2020, and ask the clerk to call the roll. I will ask staff to please keep themselves muted on your end while I unmute the council and have the clerk call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder Rummel.
Present.
Alder Rummel is present. Alder Skidmore. Alder Skidmore is, I can see Alder Skidmore is present. Alder Tierney.
Present.
Alder Tierney is present. Alder Veer.
Here.
Alder Veer is present. Aldo Abbas.
Here.
Aldo Abbas is present. Aldo Alboroz.
Here.
Aldo Alboroz is present. Aldo Balday.
Yes.
Aldo Balday is present. Aldo Bedar.
Here.
Aldo Bedar is present. Aldo Carter is excused. Aldo Evers.
Here.
Aldo Evers is present. Aldo Foster.
Present.
Aldo Foster is present. Aldo Furman.
Present.
Aldo Furman is present. Aldo Harrington.
I'm present.
Sorry, Aldo Harrington McKenna is present. Aldo Heck.
Here.
Aldo Heck is present. Aldo Hennick.
Present.
Aldo Hennick is present. Aldo Campbell.
Here.
Aldo Campbell is present. Aldo Leimer.
Here.
Aldo Leimer is present. Aldo Martin is excused. Madam Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. All right, so I will ask now our tech facilitator to share the meeting instructions.
Terribly sorry, Madam Mayor, and apologies to the body. Aldo Presto Jacomo is present as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's not miss anyone. All right, so now we'll turn to our tech facilitator for the meeting instructions, please.
Thank you. Welcome to our virtual meeting. We're going to cover a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. To members and city staff, members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. The chair clerk and tech facilitator are responsible for muting and unmuting committee members. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted briefly. Staff, click raise hand when you are asked a question. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the body, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. I would also just like to note that we do have quite a few registrants, and so we will be sticking strictly to the registration time limits, which for tonight, because our, both our, two of our three items are public hearings, and it's three minutes for non-public hearing items and five minutes for public hearing items. And again, we will be sticking to those time limits fairly strictly. All right, Aldo Abbas, suspension of the rules?
Thanks, thanks, ma'am. Suspension of the rules. Suspend rules 2.04 Order of Business, 2.05 Introduction of Business, 2.2 for ordinances, and 2.25 Resolution for items designated on the agenda.
Second. Moved in second to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing no objection, the rules are suspended, and we will move to item one. Item one is an honoring resolution, Legisstar 62295, commending and thanking Aldo Person Donna Morland for her dedicated service to the constituents in District 7 and to the City of Madison. Vice President Abbas, a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Aldo Bedar?
Second, and it'd be my pleasure to read this resolution, commending and thanking Aldo Person Donna Morland for her dedicated service to the constituents in District 7 and to the City of Madison. Whereas Aldo Person Donna Morland was elected to the Madison Common Council on April 2, 2019, and whereas Aldo Person Morland served on the City County Homeless Issues Committee, Early Childhood Care and Education Committee, Economic Development Committee, Equal Opportunities Commission, Finance Committee, Housing Strategy Committee, and the President's Work Group to Review Council Communication Tools and Processes. And whereas Aldo Person Morland served as Chair of the Aldo Work Group to Develop Logistics and Operational Details for the MPD Independent Civilian Oversight with Diligence, Dedication, and the Awareness of the Importance in Our City's History in the Creation of the First Police Civilian Oversight Board. And whereas the Common Council will now need to designate a new Aldo to do the journeying duties that she so ably took over from Aldo Steve King, and whereas Aldo Person Donna Morland, through her hard work and dedication to her Aldermanic duties, has faithfully and with honor served her constituents and the City of Madison, now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Common Council commend and thank Aldo Person Donna Morland for her dedicated service to her constituents in District 7 and the City of Madison.
Thank you, Aldo. And we do have one registrant in support, Erica Bach of Tempe Drive, not wishing to speak. And I believe that we have Aldo Morland with us tonight, if she would like to
I am here.
to say something.
I'd like to thank my former colleagues for the resolution. I enjoyed serving the city and hope to, in turn, serve the state of Wisconsin in like manner. I miss my colleagues. I have made some dear friends and hold my colleagues in high regard. I know that you guys will have a jam-packed night tonight, so I will definitely keep it short. But I just want to say to everyone, thank you for allowing me to serve the City of Madison.
Thank you, Aldo Morland. Aldo Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be brief since we do have a long meeting ahead of us, but I did want to talk just a moment. I'm going to miss Aldo Morland. I had the opportunity to sit next to her at finance meetings and would see her show up with just a huge stack of paper, all with notes and bookmarks and all set, to ask really incredibly detailed questions and think of things that I hadn't thought of and very much appreciated she did. Aldo Morland and I didn't always agree on everything, but I really, really appreciated my discussions and conversations with her about different issues. I'm excited for her and very happy for her new opportunity, but she will certainly be missed. And I obviously want to also, again, thank her for her service to District 7, the City of Madison, and thank her for her friendship.
Thank you, Aldo. All right, seeing no other Aldos in the queue, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the well-deserved honoring resolution? Seeing no objection, we'll do a virtual round of applause for you, Aldo Morland. Thank you so much for your service, and we will record a unanimous vote in favor of item one. Don't be a stranger, please. All right, that will take us to item number two, which is Legisstar 61827, the 2021 Executive Capital Budget, and we'll start with a public comment. And our first registrant is Reece Bailey of West Gorum, neither supporting nor opposing, to be followed by Brian Eucombs.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. It is my personal belief that this budget does not do enough to address the issue of poverty in our community. According to UW's Institute for Research on Poverty, nearly half of Dane County's renter households are considered cost burdened. Twenty-two percent of renters spend thirty to fifty percent of their income on rent, and twenty-four percent of renters spend more than fifty percent of their income on rent. Not only that, but according to the same research, Madison-area rent increases have outpaced social security cost-of-living adjustments, which has trapped our community in a circle of poverty. In Dane County, seventy-five percent of black children live in poverty, contrasting just five percent of white children. According to a 2013 article in the Wisconsin State Journal, "Black people are five times more likely than white people to be unemployed in Dane County." The article even quoted a spokesperson for the city council, Bob Jacobson, as saying that "the city's handling of this issue has not been coordinated or comprehensive." From 2018 to 2019, the Madison Public School District reportedly served 1,099 students suffering from extreme poverty. In addition to all this, the city is just barely beginning to recover from the worst unemployment rate that it has seen in ten years. There are parts of this budget and plan for the city that I support, but the overall budget and the initiatives that it details are not enough in addressing the issues of poverty and wealth inequality in the City of Madison. The city council has not detailed any new legislation or municipal funds aimed at maintaining the increase in employment or aimed at decreasing the overall ballooning of rent prices in this city. The legislation and municipal funding detailed in this budget are set on maintaining a downtown which frankly, members of our community do not have the financial privilege to enjoy. Furthermore, the steps that the city has taken to address poverty have shown a general lack of commitment to the issue. The botched handling of the homeless shelter that was to be established on East Town Boulevard and the general lack of transparency with the community in the establishment of a mission house at 4502 Milwaukee Street show that the city is ashamed of working to address these issues. I beg the members of this city council to understand that addressing poverty is a task which requires full commitment and transparency in the community. Let it be known that this city wishes to end homelessness and poverty by acknowledging and addressing those issues full in the face. This budget works to address debt and maintain the local economy and development of this city, two issues that I wholeheartedly support, but it does not do enough to face poverty in our community head-on. I urge the members of this council to consider for themselves whether or not there is enough funding in this budget aimed at addressing poverty. And with that, I yield the remainder of my time to the Chair of this committee.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Brian Eucombs of Dawes Street, in support, to be followed by Erica Bach.
Looks like Brian's not with us. We do have Erica, though.
Right, so then Erica Bach of Tempe Drive, in opposition, to be followed by Moncur Donway.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Common Council. Really want to ask you all, as we discuss the capital budget, to focus upon what you've heard the community overwhelmingly say over the last five months of uprising. What we believe is most important is what we must fund. When you hear seventy-five percent of black children are in poverty, and that ultimately means three out of every four black children in our city do not have what they need, we must, we absolutely must, look at what that says we believe in. And so, as we look to invest in homeless shelters, as we look to invest in affordable housing, as we look to attempt to solve issues of housing security and wealth inequality, any money spent must come directly from the Madison Police Department. Your mayor and your leadership have worked for years to try to ask the Madison Police Department to divest from their budget, which is the highest in the city, and invest back in the community. So while I support many of the initiatives under this capital operating, excuse me, under this capital budget, it's extremely important to highlight for you all that we are not going to continue to say Black Lives Matter while we fund departments that are based on squashing that dream. Three out of four black children in poverty, I want you to think and look around your Zoom panel, any Aldos of color, you are telling their children and their grandchildren that their needs do not matter. So I cannot in good conscience support this capital budget. I ask you again to comb through and fund what we believe is the most important. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Moncur Donway of Mills Street, to be followed by Bianca Gomez.
Hey, everyone. Thank you so much. Shout out to everybody who registered to speak tonight. I'm so proud of the work that we've been doing around this budget, and I will say that I am opposed to the budget as it stands. I don't feel that it's a reflection of the values of this community, at least not my community. We don't take kindly to doublespeak and to duplicity. What I mean by that is the fact that we have a mayor that is publicly stating that they care about racial inequities and that they care about queer people, and yet this budget does not reflect that. This budget does not reflect serious investment in black communities. It does not reflect serious investment in housing. It does not reflect serious investment in any form of healthcare, doesn't it? And I know that the county takes care of healthcare more, but it doesn't reflect any, any serious investment in the things that we need. And when is it gonna stop? When, as a city, are we gonna stop saying one thing and doing another thing? And I'm really, I mean, I hope y'all are paying attention to the power that we have, that black people have, not only in Madison but in the state. We flipped the state. We flipped the state blue, and we're tired of saving white people from themselves every election cycle and at every local government level. We're tired of it. Like, y'all cannot continue to count on our votes and be, continue to expect us to vote you in if this is the type of things that you're gonna do. If you're just gonna be shady and actually just side on the side of banks and real estate and businesses, right? Like, we see you. We are informed and well-educated. We know what, what you're doing, right? And so, again, I'm gonna urge this body, someone just asked, just asked, like, now that we flip blue, like, now that the presidential election is over, what are you, what are you gonna be focusing on? Like, what's next? What's, what's next? And I'm like, well, you know, we have, unfortunately, in Madison, we have budgets that don't reflect the people and that allow thousands of people to be homeless every day, and that allow people to be facing domestic violence and sexual assault situations because they don't even have the money to get other alternative housing. That allow hundreds of families to still be calling us, trying to get help for housing, but yet proclaim that they care about, about people's housing. And this isn't just about housing. We say that a lot. It's about our people being, having a chance to heal and to thrive. When are we gonna talk about that? Like, when are we gonna be able to stop begging you all for basic shelter and our basic needs? And when are we gonna talk about joy and thriving? Because that's what we deserve. Everything that we've done for this community, we deserve that. Don't talk about giving us another community building. Don't talk about giving us more police. Don't talk about giving us nothing if you're not talking about life-affirming infrastructure, if you're not actually prioritizing that in the budget. And I can't stay on to speak for the operational budget when it comes up, but both of these budgets, both of these budgets are just not in alignment with the people. And we are turning all of our energies, all of our attention to like, wow, we just did this as a country, right? What can we do on the local level? So I urge y'all to get in line, to get on the right side of this thing before you have thousands and thousands of people on your head talking about, why did you do this, right? So, again, it's not in alignment with what we want to see. We literally have queer, queer black folks, literally queer black folks having to find housing right now as we approach the winter, and there's no resources. There's no resources in that. Those people are gonna be homeless. They're gonna be homeless at a time of pandemic, in a time of global pandemic, when you all actually have a chance to do something different, to do something better. This is not normal. We should not have to live this way. We shouldn't have to come and beg.
Thirty seconds.
We should not have to come and beg for our humanity. We are people too. We deserve better. We deserve housing, healthcare, food, and you all have the money to do it. Or rather, we have the money and you all are supposed to be stewarding it well. So do that. Do that. Or watch and see how the people actually respond to you all.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Bianca Gomez of Harriet Ave, to be followed by Sambo Chuen.
Bianca, you should be unmuted. Bianca, you might have a prompt to unmute yourself. Okay, we have two Biancas, so I'm gonna try the other one.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So yes, again, my name is Bianca Gomez. A lot of my work in this community is around aiming violence, and violence and harm is often a reason, illogical reason, in my experience and expertise investing, to invest in the police. But violence prevention, you know, it cannot start or end with police. If that worked, Madison would be the safest city in the nation, right? But like Erica said, seventy-five percent of our children are, are surviving poverty, which was a policy choice, right? It wasn't a personality choice. It wasn't a family choice. It wasn't a, the choice of the, the parents or the children. It was a policy choice by the City of Madison to allow our children to live in poverty every day, to allow our children not to have food, not to have shelter, not to have access to resources. And, you know, we continue to invest in police. We continue to invest in, in systems that destroy us and harm us every day and, and have rhetoric and have Black Lives Matter banners on our Facebook page and have, we stand with immigrants and, and we stand with queer folks, right? As a community, I'm gonna tell you that we are so tired of rhetoric and we are so tired of talk. This election, you know, I had a huge role in, in the outcomes of, of this election and, and organize, helped organize people in Madison and all over the country. And that, that proved to me that I have, and as a community, we have power to get people out of office who do not align with our vision of safety and who do not align with our vision of dignity and humanity. Some of you on this council, some of you on, you know, here, I made phone calls and said, hey, I think this person is, would, would be a good person to have an office, and I'm very disappointed and, and confused because we continue, again, to have rhetoric around how we want to change communities, how we want to make communities safer. And then we do the opposite when it comes to signing on the dotted line. It's been said dozens of times in meetings by M. Adams and Moncur Donway, budgets are moral documents, right? And right now, you are showing us that your morals bind in line with white supremacy and, and the status quo. And I really encourage you to think about what side of history you all will be on as you leave Madison and leave your positions. Will you be remembered as someone who championed social justice, not only in words, but in action? Will you be remembered as someone who was in line with our vision for freedom? Will you someone who is in line with our vision around defunding police and getting our people out of cages? Because that is the trajectory, trajectory of our history, right? That is gonna inevitably happen because of our work and our action and our dedication to our people. And what role are you gonna play in that? Are you gonna be a barrier? Are you gonna be a wall? Are you gonna stand in the way? Are you gonna fall in line with the leadership of, of the black folks in this community and around the nation who are demanding justice, who are demanding safety, who are demanding dignity? So are you gonna do that? Are you gonna be someone who continues to invest in cages, who continues to invest in poverty? Yes, you all are actively investing in poverty, you know, with this Yes, you all are actively investing in poverty, you know, with this budget. You're investing in things that kill us every day. Um, and I also think that some of you on this committee actually want to do uh on this council actually do the right thing. Um, but there's, you all are scared for for whatever reason. You all have been uh, it's not comfortable to to not
Thirty seconds.
align yourselves with the status quo. But again, who do you want to be remembered as when you leave this earth? Um, and I encourage you to be someone who aligns with our politics, our goals, and our vision for freedom and safety. You all have access to a wealth of knowledge, right? Some of you all have master's degrees and PhDs and have been in and you all have access to a wealth of knowledge that tells you that police don't keep our community safe. So now it's time for you all to step up, or you're gonna have to step out of those positions.
And that is time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Sambo Chuen of Allied Drive, to be followed by Lizzie Bruno.
So it looks like Sambo is not present. We do have Lizzie, though. Lizzie, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
Lizzie Bruno of Drexel Ave, and to be followed by Una McKessi-Green.
So I'm Lizzie. I live on Drexel Ave, which you can see. Um, you know, a representative of mine once said of the budget process that it's a limited process, right? So she said, saying yes to me means um saying no to someone else. And like many of the speakers today have said, that's my response exactly, right? Defund the police. Invest in community. I asked my rep, like, who who, so who have we been saying yes to all these years? How have police unions gotten so strong? Why do they have so much sway? Um, why is it that Officer Matt Kenny, after shooting and killing Tony Robinson, is not here advocating for alternatives to policing? Why is Matt Kenny instead training future police? And are we gonna keep defending that and say that that's okay? Who in their healthy, right mind would shoot and kill someone to take take the life of a fellow human being and not then not be searching and seeking for alternatives, not be leading that? The dominating culture has created this mythology of safety for white bodies through a strategy of racism and hierarchy. Right? This internalization of racialized hierarchy lives in our narratives and our emotional ranges. It lives in our bodies, and we don't actually have to believe in it for it to be true. You might even stop right now and just notice, like, how is your body responding here, listening to public testimony? Like, how are you actually feeling right now? Can you feel your legs? Like, are you, can you feel your back? Is your thinking self still connected to your heart? Like, do you know what your priorities are and who you're accountable to? Um, if I get up here and I'm like, you people are all idiots. You just suck. Like, you're bad at your job. Like, how does that impact how you feel, right? Like, literally, our bodies shape and contract and contort. Um, and white bodies actually continue to teach each other tools of distancing, controlling, numbing out anxiety and trying to fix it to deal with the deeply dehumanizing practices of racism. So in order to achieve a vision of collective liberation, the in this inheritance of white bodies supremacy has to be faced and processed, and we need new collective practices. But mostly, we need white folks in positions of power um to listen, to commit to reparations, uh, to systemic transformation. We need white leaders to stop believing that they have all the answers and actually to concede that power, right? Drastic changes are necessary, and we can actually look to these generative policies coming out of the Movement for Black Lives, coming out of Freedom, Inc., coming like here before you today, like testifying with great like ideas and necessary changes to create a world where black trans lives matter, and our systems show that. So defunding the militarized police force is one way to fund efforts and projects that actually impact outcomes ra- rather than perpetuating a criminalizing system that doesn't work. Sometimes it's scary to let go of those old systems that actually limit life, but the time is now. Defund the police. Invest in community. Reparations for black and indigenous communities.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Una McKessi-Green of Rockwell Drive, to be followed by Ananda Deacon.
Looks like Una is not with us.
Right. How about Ananda Deacon of West Washington Ave, to be followed by Kristy Parsons? Oh, no, sorry. Kristy doesn't want to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Ananda. And oh, before I start, I believe Sambo is on the call. She might be under the name of Samantha, though. Um, but yeah, I'm Ananda. I am in opposition to the current budget as it stands. I saw that the Dane County budget approved nine million dollars to continue housing those without homes and hotels. And I assume you all think that that's really generous to do the bare minimum while its citizens are in a literal pandemic. But I really, really want to stress that I want to see this city invest money into actually solving the problem of homelessness. I'm in school right now, as you can probably tell, and every so often, I have a class that brings up Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. Um, if you're not familiar with it, it's like this pyramid with a bunch of tiers. And on the bottommost tier, it has the physiological needs. And so it says that humans most need clean air, water, food, sleep, and access to clothing and shelter. Notice how it doesn't say that humans need police. It doesn't say that we need guns. It doesn't say we need prisons. But it does mention that we need shelter as one of our most important needs. This city is one of the worst for black and brown folks to live in, and we're reminded of that every single day, that Madison allows its citizens to sleep on the streets, uh, to go without food, to put them in situations where COVID can run rampant, whether it's in the streets or in these bogus prisons. And I'm honestly sick of seeing it. Like, y'all know what to do. Like, it's not hard. Y'all know that you need to take money that y'all have been using to fund the killing, tear-gassing, sexual and verbal harassment of our black and brown communities and invest that money into us, into our communities. We know what keeps us safe, and it's not y'all, and y'all know this. So we're watching, y'all. I just wanted to let you know, we're watching how you continuously spit in our faces with all these listening sessions that lack teeth, that lack action. I have one, maybe two chances to get a passing grade in my classes, whether while y'all have chance after chance and meeting after meeting after meeting to play with our lives like this. And I just don't understand how y'all are getting away with it, to be quite honest. So y'all have had enough chances. Um, just know that we voted y'all in, and we can and will vote y'all out. Um, yeah, I guess I'm done.
Thank you. Um, so let's check again if we have Brian Eucombs or uh Sambo or Samantha Chuen or Una McKessi-Green.
So it looks like we do have Samantha.
Yep. Chuen, Sambo Chuen?
Yes.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Hi, sorry. Um, my anxiety is really high. I think it's the pandemic and everything going around. And, you know, um, talking to you guys tonight make me realize, like, I have a home to come to and I have a job, but I can't imagine the people who are having to deal with all this and the pandemic and being homeless. So with that, you know, there's a lot of homeless folks, including children, out there in this cold weather right now. And the police department has over eighty million dollars that could help shelter them, uh, can help feed them and provide warm clothes and blankets. If you want to use the funds to serve and protect, like we say about like the police, what they should be doing, this is that moment where you can use that to serve and protect. There are kids that doesn't have enough to eat. We need more Reese's for our black and brown communities who are struggling more than ever. I mean, I can say firsthand, I live in this community, and it's a low-income community, which means I see myself, I see my family members who live here, I see friends, I see my neighbors who are suffering, and they were suffering way before the pandemic. So before all this happened, there wasn't enough resources. And now with COVID, they're suffering more than ever. So with that said, you know, if you care to let folks die, then, or you care not to let folks die, then use the funds to invest in our communities. Right now, we need more mental health resources, fundings for medical needs, like supplies and medication. We need help with paying for heat and transportation, food, and affordable housing. I mean, there's housing out there, but when we say affordable, we mean affordable to the folks who are low income. I mean, nine hundred dollars, eight hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars a month in rent, that's not affordable when they're either not making enough to even feed their families. You know, right now, there are victims of domestic violence that cannot even escape or leave because there's not enough fundings to place them somewhere safe. You know, everyone has either run out or have not uh, doesn't have enough fundings. Uh, this is where fundings can be placed. This city, this state, this country has so many opportunities and so much funds to help us, but yet most of us are living like we are in a third-world country. I am a an immigrant, a child of an immigrant. And I can tell you, like, where we live in Cambodia to now, there's no difference. And why is that? When this is the land of opportunities. You are literally killing the people who are who voted you in. If this was you or your family member, what would you do? The decision is in your hands. Are we important enough to get that chance to live, or do we have to struggle until we die? I mean, it's it's up to you. I mean, I think we've said it over and over again. We've uh Monka asked you, like, how many times do we have to beg you for the basic needs and basic essentials so that we could just live? Thank you.
Thank you. Doesn't look like either of our other registrants on the capital budget are here. So are there any questions for any of our registrants on the capital budget?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor. We do have additional registrants um that came in a little late.
I need to refresh. All right. Uh, so then, oh dear, I will go to Sarah Downey of Commonwealth, to be followed by Allison Bellburn.
So it looks like Sarah's not with us. We do have Allison, though.
Right. Allison Bellburn of Mifflin, to be followed by Jessie Bellburn.
Hi, my name is Allison Bellburn. I'm a stay-at-home mom and somebody who was born in Madison and has lived here for most of my life. I was one of the people who was lucky enough to be um transformed in my thinking by the protests of two thousand and fifteen and beyond and by the hard work of leaders like those of Freedom, Inc., especially M. Adams. Um, I, if with without this this time, I don't know that I actually learned a whole lot of new facts during this time, but I had a worldview that started to make sense. Just a few facts put into place, and I feel like I've started to understand the world better. What I don't understand is why we have elected officials who haven't embarked on this journey. Um, you guys are tasked with making really important decisions that affect a lot of people. And I'm just gonna assume that you got into this job to, quote, "make the world a better place," to make Madison a better place. But it seems like your priorities are making State Street a better place, making the East Wash corridor a better place. Like, everybody's been saying budgets are moral documents. And if this is your morality, we have a big problem. If you think that morality trickles down, that's trickle-down economics. And when Republicans do it, it's a problem. But when you do it, people, people seem to think it makes sense. And it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make pe- sense to people who who are studying these things. Um, you've been asked loudly, vociferously, pleadingly to defund the police, and you're not listening. Um, you know, in two thousand and fifteen, when I started to understand the world better, when I started to to listen better, um, to listen to leaders who are most impacted by the systems um that we should all be fighting against, it was kind of a lonely process, especially um as a white person and having a lot of white friends who weren't necessarily ready to join me in in this venture. Um, when, with the tragic murder of George Floyd, um, although the the reasons for the change in consciousness or the change in um the display of consciousness were were tragic, um, it was inspiring to see that all of the work that people have done since two thousand and fifteen really had started to take root. Um, there are people everywhere who in two thousand and fifteen weren't ready, and in two thousand and twenty have found themselves ready to hear the truth about the police, to accept what it means that the police were created to be slave patrols and strikebreakers, to suppress religious descent, uh, women who stepped out of line, and American Indians who wanted to keep their land. Um, the conclusions that you should naturally draw um mean that it shouldn't be surprising when we look at what police actually do in their time. What police actually do in their time is not to help people. It is to protect private property. That is literally in the data. They do not protect any of us from violence. It's just literally not what they do. So if what was done in two thousand and fifteen produced two thousand and twenty, can you imagine what's being done in two thousand and twenty, all the hard work, all the activism, all the organizing, all the following of the lead, of the hard work of people of color, especially black people, to let us know what's really going on? Can you imagine what two thousand and twenty-five is gonna look like? There's no chance that most of you guys will keep your jobs. There's no chance. There are people who are celebrating Biden's win, but we're not celebrating the advance of liberalism. We're not even celebrating Biden. We're celebrating that these same activists help and just to just barely dampen the spirit of Trump. We we have a real problem, and if it weren't for the tireless efforts of the youth in the streets and activists
Thirty seconds.
That was loud. Biden would have lost. Biden was a bad candidate. He was a liberal, and he is so much reflected in the work that you guys are doing. He is a continuation of the status quo that we need to push to the left, just like we are trying to push you to the left. If you are going to continue to vote to increase police budgets rather than decrease them, like you've heard that you should be doing, then your jobs are not secure, or anything but secure.
That's your time. Thank you. Our next registrant is Jessie Bellburn of Fourth Street, to be followed by Lauren Burn.
So it looks like Jessie is not with us, and Lauren is also not with us.
All right, then we'll go to Bob Schaefer of Cottonwood Circle, to be followed by Jeanette May New.
Bob, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
Bob, are you there? May have a prompt to unmute yourself, Bob. There you go.
I finally phoned it. Sorry for the delay. Uh, yes, I'm not sure exactly what the thing here, I'm wanting to talk to you about the uh investment in the body cameras for the police. And that uh one of the things that uh has happened in the past is that um when incidents happen that um people on the streets use their phones and everything like that to capture some of the events that are are taken, the body cameras will give it from the point of view uh of the police so that uh what they are seeing and what they're reacting to uh can be more taken into consideration as well. As far as defunding the police, that I do agree that for the uh procedures of mental health uh that uh the current uh efforts to uh bring in uh more of a mental health resource uh capability is a very important aspect. That uh the news today just had over a thousand shells uh um reported of being found, a number of shootings that have occurred. Um, that something needs to be done uh about that. Uh, that um the activity that's going on with that uh seems to be escalating. Um, and uh we need to uh focus more and provide the the police with the uh tools and with the uh staffing that they need in order to keep the community safe. Um, that um, I think that uh in some of the uh school meetings that I've been at uh that uh the concept that uh some of the uh registrants uh brought out, especially with small children, especially with small children, uh, their mantra was cops are trained to kill black kids. And I think that sets up a, uh, wrong, uh, environment. And, uh, I think that, uh, the, the police are doing what they can. And that, uh, I disagree with the concept that, uh, some of the people have mentioned in terms of, uh, defunding them. I think, yes, there are many things that need to be done. The community needs to look at that. And, but I think, uh, cutting the police, uh, resources is not the answer at this point in time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jeanette May New of Montana Ave in Sun Prairie. Do we have Jeanette?
Um, I've been asked to unmute, but I'm not Jeanette. There you go.
Thank you.
I got it. Do you guys hear that?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, um, my name is Jeanette. Um, I'm actually Cambodian, so I just really wanna talk about the budget here where I'm opposing. Um, I was born and raised in, raised in Madison, Wisconsin, who had lived here all my life practically. Um, just looking at the operation budget and the things that you guys are talking about have not been showing. I've lived here for 36 years. I was raised on welfare, and we barely made it. You know, I, we barely made it. My parents are refugees who's been here these 36 years, who always lived on a set income, who didn't, like, realize what we can do or cannot do because of the system that you guys have and you guys are still using on us. So what I'm saying is that please look into, you know, why are you using so much money on the police? Why not defund them? People say, oh, why are you using this? You know, the police need all the budget and everything. They need the money for all this to correct stuff. But what have they corrected for 36 years of my life? When, you know, so many crimes and stuff that happened, you guys didn't fix anything. All you guys do is put people in freaking jails who doesn't, like, do nothing for them. The mental health that you guys are giving to people, it just, there's none there. So what I really wanna talk about and tell you guys is that you guys gotta really talk to you guys, community, the people of color, and also, like, the black community, you know? You guys sit out here in our community saying that you're for us, but you're not for us because it's still happening. People are not having homes. People have issues with mental issues, and you guys are not putting those resources out there for our people. I don't understand, like, you guys all sit here having all these meetings. I see it all the time. I hear it. But what are you guys doing just listening to us? Have you guys even changed anything? You guys are just amending, like, numbers, little numbers. What are those numbers, um, doing for us? What are they doing for the community? You guys really, really need to look at that and actually see, like, what is needed in our community. I've worked with many, many colored people and black people that who are homeless, who can't even find housing right now. Like, you know how hard it takes us to work with them to even just talk to them? The anxiety, the mental illness that they have themselves because they don't have shelter? It takes a, over a month, almost two months to even try to find a job, to apply, because it's so hard out there because either their background or, you know, they have something that's blocking them. There's so many systems in place to even get them sheltered. If you guys look in Madison, there's so many apartments out there, which costs is like freaking $900 for a one-bedroom apartment. 13 to 14, maybe 15 or $1600 for a freaking three-bedroom apartment. Who can afford that? And then you have to go background checking? Like, how are they supposed to start over? Especially to the people who are freaking in domestic violence and sexual assault situations. There are no system in place for our people. So I really think you guys need to look at that and check on yourself to see where are the resources at? You guys say you guys are giving us grants? Those grants aren't helping. So what I'm asking is that you guys really need to defund the freaking police because they haven't really done anything. All they do is capture freaking black folks. And, you know, my brothers, I'm telling you straight up, my brothers have been locked up for almost freaking 16 years, and they're still locked up. For what reason? It's because the freaking judge was racist. They point a black, you know, they don't understand, like, what we go through. You guys don't understand, are sitting there just listening to us. You guys don't understand how much mental shit that we go through. Sorry, don't mean to swear or anything like that, but you know, it's hard because you guys need to realize where everybody's coming from. In order for you to pick and choose what funding you, you need to invest in, you need to talk to your community, to the people that are affected, and listen. Listen hard, because right now, we're waiting on the replies and what you're doing. We're seeing what you do. We're hearing what you're doing. So do your job, because we do need that action now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, while I refresh, uh, let's see if we've been joined by Brian Newcombs, Una McKessy-Green, Sarah Downey, Jessie Bellburn, or Lauren Burn. That is, if not, that's.
We do have Lauren Burn.
All right, Lauren, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I believe this is a larger group than previously addressed about the same issue, which is the operating budget amendment 10. Um, you know, I'm not talking about the good police and the bad police. There are clearly both, as there are most walks of life. And when I first heard about defunding the police, I thought, well, that's, that's a little extreme. I, I like disarm the police, but I wasn't sure about the defund. But the, but I, I, I've signed on. I've signed on because of objective realities that the police have never really been designed to protect people, but to attract property of the wealthy from people. The gentleman before the last speaker spoke of, uh, curriculum that was, I can't remember what, what, didn't quite get it. It was teaching young kids that black, that police kill black people? You know, this is, the, the high schools had these, uh, whatever police relationship offers. And, you know, some kids kinda got comfortable with the police. Kid who lived across the street from me got comfortable with police. So that when his son, his, his good friend was freaking out, and they were kinda worried about him, but were still being kids and didn't wanna hang around, they called 911 expecting an ambulance would come. And ambulance didn't come. Officer Kenny came and had no idea what to do with the situation and shot and killed Tony Robinson. That was a mental health situation. Toxin-induced, I'd say, but mental health situation. Police had no idea what to do with it. The reason you have to defund the police is because there's not enough money. There's not enough money to true. There's just not enough money to go around. And you get more, you know, armored vests, and you get bigger guns, you kill more people. And you do it with more impunity. The money needs to go to the communities to police and keep themselves safe. They can use plenty of instruction on ideas, at least, it may help, be helpful. They can sift that through their own community values and see if those are helpful or if those are destructive to their communities. The money needs to go to mental health, education, and training. Crisis workers, yes, but also access to more providers so that more care can be delivered. The money obviously needs to go to job support. DVR has some money. They need to have more support. They need to be more support for people to be hired and their wages underwritten. The money needs to go to food and shelter, because without food and shelter, you're not gonna get by, and you're gonna be hungry, you're not gonna think clearly, and you're gonna, you, you're not gonna be healthy, obviously. And I still say that Freud said love and work. And you need to give people, the community, which can share the love and understand each other's cultures, and within their own, even within about their own. And you need the work, because that's what makes people feel okay about themselves. They haven't really translated that, those feelings into anything else, but being employed and contributing to your family, your community. Money for the police is money spent to make people more unsafe, more vulnerable, more victims. Need to take the money away from that group. Put them out of business. Don't talk police about how they'll be so unsafe out there. Don't have the guns. Make it clear nobody's got guns. Give them some bulletproof vests for a while. Get people in there that know how to handle people that are in crisis, that are enraged, because there's reason to be enraged, and defund the police, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, do we have any of our other outstanding registrants with us?
Nope, not seeing, uh, Brian, Una, or Jessie.
What about Sarah Downey?
No, Sarah.
All right. Um, then I will ask if, um, the council has any questions for any of the registrants so far. All right, seeing no questions. I would like, um, to ask, uh, the council, uh, without objection, if we can move on to testimony on the operating budget and place the capital budget on the table, um, until we finish all public comment. Is there any objection to doing so? Seeing no objection, we will move on then. So we'll, I'll, I'll first close the public hearing on the capital budget. Um, we'll place the capital budget on the table, and we'll move to item number three, which is Legis 62322, the 2021 executive operating budget. We'll open that public hearing. And if you'll give me a moment, I will bring that list of registrants up. And we will start with Kim Rickman of Droster Road to be followed by Amy Zion.
Good evening. My name is Kim Richmond. Tonight I'm speaking in support of the proposed amendment number 10 to accept the COPS grant that was awarded to the Madison Police Department. Excuse me. I'm a lifelong Madison resident. I still have family here. We've all had opportunities to leave Madison, but it was just too beautiful, exciting, and above all, safe and diverse. We used to love Madison. We used to brag about the city. I used to show strangers around the city. And when I was traveling, I was damn proud to say I'm from Madison, Wisconsin. That's no longer the case, and I'm not alone. If you haven't heard that, you are not listening. In all those years, there was never talk about defunding or reducing law enforcement in Madison, and for good reason. They are highly trained, respected professionals. Property crimes, muggings, burglaries, break-ins, assaults, car thefts, drive-by shootings, and shootings in traffic on our busiest roads on the busiest times of the day have skyrocketed across town on a daily basis. The worst incident, of course, was innocent Anisa Scott, who was murdered by one of these daily shootings. If you aren't aware, and you should be, there have been 11 homicides so far this year, and I emphasize so far, because we still have eight weeks left in 2020. Let's not forget about the incident last weekend where at least 75 spent rounds were found. How those bullets didn't hit more than three people, especially innocent residents walking or driving, was a miracle. All of these daily incidents, then the news of the Madison Police Department proposed defunding, and the refusal of the common council to accept the COPS grant is disturbing and confusing. This has awakened the normally quiet citizens of Madison, and we are concerned about the direction of public safety funding and support. In my neighborhood, on the Far East Side, and every neighborhood around us, people are scared. They're frustrated, and they're angry about the incidents that have happened to themselves, other neighbors, friends, and relatives. Our sense of safety has been destroyed. There are now places residents no longer want to go, or streets where we no longer feel safe to drive on. We residents are frustrated that we have to be so extremely vigilant about locking up or we might find our home, our garage or vehicles broken into, or our vehicles stolen, or property stolen. We are heartbroken about the young lives lost in Madison to shootings, motor vehicle crashes from fleeing vehicles, or lives affected by bullets that have hit vehicles, people, or other homes this year. We are genuinely worried that the 1.25 million incuts is going to affect the type of police response and the level of safety and professionalism that we've come to expect from the great people of the Madison Police Department. That will make it harder to, it will also make it harder to maintain and re- uh, recruit good officers. My point to all this, this is not the time to cut police nor refuse to accept the COPS grant. The Madison Police Department is already understaffed, and they are already working extra on hours. They aren't getting needed time off, and we will still be losing more officers. Madam Mayor, we all understand that the city is in a financial bind, and for more than one reason, but the safety of our citizens should be the absolute very last service that should be cut back. A Princeton report found that local governments investing more in their police departments receive large returns in crime prevention, especially in times of economic hardship. Municipalities have found that they, I'm sorry, municipalities have found that having more officers on the streets dramatically reduces officer fatigue. Tired officers are less effective and could use excessive force during routine encounters, the report added. The data we have clearly shows that having more police officers directly leads to lower crime. Even in 2009, President Obama granted $1 billion to cities to hire more local police, and there was no political pushback nationwide. Madam Mayor and Alders, I have two questions for you. Traditionally, having more police officers hasn't been a political or controversial issue in Madison. Why is it now, when violent crime is worse than ever? And number two, will you give in to activists with ridiculous demands? Or will you follow the path that has.
Thirty seconds.
Stay for as long as we can, remember. Look at the facts. I request that the City of Madison Common Council accept the COPS grant from the U.S. Department of Justice to make and keep our neighborhoods safe for the law-abiding, hardworking people of Madison. I also request that the Common Council should vote to oppose amended, amendment number 11 that mysteriously showed up, uh, late yesterday. It's too vague and lacks transparency. To the Alders who proposed the amendment number 11 very late yesterday, if city employees.
That's time.
Make voluntary for those.
That's your time. Thank you.
Be well.
Our next registrant is Amy Zion of, uh, Tugstad Glen to be followed by Tannen Scriber.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have lived in Madison since 1985. I have very rarely felt unsafe here until this year. I now feel unsafe almost every day. There are guns-fired incidents and gang violence like we have never seen before. The cause contin- cause to continue is not enough to protect our community. The proposed budget cuts to the MPD will signal further danger. We are in a crisis. While many of these crimes are being, being committed by teens who have been let back on to the streets after mul- multiple felonies, which is a separate issue, it is up to the MPD to contain them, chase them, and arrest them. If Madison continues on this crime wave, this is not the time, not the time, to decrease the MPD budget. It's time to increase it for the safety of our city residents, which should be our mayor and city council's top priority.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Tannen Scriber of Sun Prairie to be followed by David Blaska.
Mayor, there is no Tannen, but we do have David Blaska with us.
All right, then David Blaska of LaRuth Terrace to be followed by Amy Osinga.
Well, thank you. Um, you know, it's time that somebody called out the social justice warriors who have boarded up Madison, who use racial hatred to vilify the police and browbeat city leaders. It's time our elected officials heard from the rest of us. It's time we called out their hoaxes, like Althea Bernstein and her four classic Wisconsin frat boys walking up State Street with a bottle of Kingsford lighter fluid. What does it really say about a political movement that encourages would-be martyrs from a prosperous, middle-class family to fake victimhood? Now that is a hate crime. It's time we called out their outright lies, like this one told at the council's last finance committee meeting. Quote, "Police are burglarizing our communities and killing black bodies," unquote. Well, who is killing black people in Madison? It's not the police. It's other black people. And I'm not the one who made this all about a race. But how many more high-speed shootouts on the streets of Madison before another Maurice Bowman Jr. is rubbed out on a straighter road? Or, or tragically, 11-year-old Anisa Scott? Since Madison's war on police has heated up, shots fired incidents through September were up 76% over a year earlier. Another myth, police only defend property. 75 shell casings found outside the bowling alley on Grand Canyon Drive Saturday night. Two black men seriously wounded, one is near death. Police didn't do that. Madison's already tied its record for the most homicides in a year, with two months yet to go. Police didn't kill any of those 11 people. More fake news, at the last finance committee meeting, Monica Dawi of Freedom Incorporated actually said kids are. actually said kids are stealing cars because of a bad economy. Then why do they abandon those cars, often with the engine still running, when they're not being driven into homes, or innocent drivers? Like Anthony Chung and his girlfriend, both honor students at Memorial High School by a stolen car going 90 miles an hour on Mineral Point Road. Young scholar is dead and his girlfriend terribly injured. Stolen cars are up 55%, but you want to cut the police. Another myth: Black people don't feel safe. Well, neither did Dr. Beth Potter and Robin Carr, made to kneel in the cold woods and shot in the head at close range, execution style, apparently by a young black man, an intern of this very common council. Another social justice warrior said, "Police are racist, sexist, violent, and disrespectful. We need to be cutting the police budget," end quote. Just who is calling for defunding the police? Not Wayne Strong, Jack Daniels, Colleen Kerr, or Anthony Cooper? Not the Reverend Alex G., Michael Johnson, Isiger Knox, or Richard Brown? Not former high school board president James Howard? Not 100 black men? Not the Urban League? Not the NAACP? So why do you allow these self-appointed social justice vigilantes to shut down Madison streets at will? They even set up outdoor barbecue grills on the Beltline. This all a big joke? It's a sad state of affairs when city leaders make the extortionist with a baseball bat and a bullhorn a civil rights hero. Then owe me the money, indeed. And a burger and beer if you don't want your building burned down. Madison's boarded up, and it's not because of COVID, it's because of the police bashers. So please add those four officers by accepting the federal COPS grant. Those four cops will only bring us up to the current level. Support Amendment 10, and oppose Amendment 11. You're going to make the police department pay for city employees who don't want to take a voluntary unpaid furlough? That's amazing. If you want to defund anything, folks, defund the Police Civilian Oversight Board. Their only power is to harass the police, and it will never buy credibility for the police from the likes of Freedom Incorporated. Right there, you can save $450,000. And I would say, listen to your own colleagues, Alders, Sherry Carter, and Barbara McKinney. They want more police. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Amy Ossinga of Charles Lane, to be followed by Michelle Quinn.
My name is Amy Ossinga. I live on the west side of Madison. Since college, I have been a supporter of justice and police reform in our country. I support both updating policing practices and creating programs to help prevent crime, those that address homelessness, poverty, and mental health. Yet with crimes significantly increasing in Madison, we need our police to be properly funded to make our city safe for everyone. I was a victim of an attempted car theft at 3:00 in the afternoon while nine months pregnant. I've heard countless stories from neighbors about people they know who have suffered from robberies and theft in our area, let alone the stories that made it to the news. Most notable on November 5th, a house two blocks down was robbed by five juveniles, one armed, which led to a car chase across the city, about two miles west of us, the shooting this past weekend at the bowling alley. About a mile from our house this summer, there was a mass shooting at Garner Park, evidence of what seems to be a gang war. And these are just a few of the incidents that have happened within two miles of our home, let alone the community at large. Currently, we are already short of officers in comparison to peer cities and national averages. In 2022, we'll be absorbing the town of Madison, which will require more officers. We are already at a disadvantage for managing crime and violence in our city, at a time where shootings are up 75%, theft up 55%, and burglaries up 28% in comparison to last year. Since we are already having elevated issues in our community, I ask that the police budget does not get cut for 2020, and that we accept the federal grant we've been honored for the COPS program to help support State Street and the surrounding areas. I ask for funding for their experimental mental health program to be found elsewhere in the budget, or even through crowdfunding. Crime and violence are complex societal issues and cannot be solved quickly. We will need a multi-pronged approach to the way we manage crime, mental health, and poverty in our community. It will take time, likely years, to see an impact from additional crime prevention programs in our city. During this time, please do not cut funding and accept the federal COPS grant, so the city is prepared to adequately manage the increase in crime. Everyone in Madison deserves to feel protected and safe in their community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Michelle Quinn of Chatham Terrace, to be followed by Dan Fitch.
Michelle, you should have a prompt. There you go.
Good evening. In my career as a speech-language pathologist, I trained graduate students providing early intervention to preschool children. One way those three- to five-year-olds view of the world expanded beyond home was to learn who their community helpers were. For this unit, we role-played various important roles with people with whom they regularly could interact, such as librarians and grocery workers. Sometimes we'd visit a fire station, sometimes a police officer would come and interact with the children and show them how a siren sounds. After each of these kind of lessons, the respect young children had for our community helpers was evident in the nature of their play. They imagined becoming more than they were when they grew up because of these actual positive encounters. I plead with you to not throw the baby out with the bathwater, specifically in terms of funding our Madison Police Department. Our police force has a national reputation for a coherent, citizen-oriented, relational approach to serving our community. This past summer, their acumen as a team was on public display on the local news, as people who gathered downtown hurled insults and objects at them. For whatever they are paid, the police showed up when the heat was on, kept their cool, did what our caring mayor asked of them to do. At the exact same time, the MPD blotter and Nextdoor app entries attested to escalating violence in and across many city neighborhoods. The fear that created, in turn, provoked some citizens to announce their intent to shoot suspects who trespassed on their lawn. I commend you, Mayor and City Council, for addressing our budgetary challenges, and especially for creating a unified approach to address the sources of unrest in order to quell violence. However, as you make cuts and borrow against the rainy day fund, I urge you to not assume or place the scars of other places in our nation where police conduct is reprehensible on our police force. The data here speak of a force who want to encourage and scaffold on the good in their relation with us, the tax-paying residents. If you shrink the MPD in size, what will that do to their stress and well-being when serving in volatile situations that aren't necessarily scheduled to occur at an even or predictable pace? Many neighborhoods, including mine, have forged an alliance with MPD through the Good Neighbor Project. Homegrown here in Madison, it is a project under consideration for adoption in several other cities and states, recognized for the power of its promise to foster community ties. Please do not cut the community outreach arm of the Madison Police Department. Otherwise, how will our children experience firsthand that all who are community helpers are heroes and heroines because they serve to promote and keep the peace in times of celebration, emergency, conflict, and increasingly, violence in our city? Those heroes and heroines include you as elected government officials, and it includes our Madison Police Department. I am counting on you, Alders and Mayor, to stand by and for the MPD, who have served us so well in the main. Data from 2020 indicate now is not the time to strain their resources or their personnel. At a minimum, please wait until you have data from the new initiative to see if those with mental health issues can be served solely by the new task force without calling on our police, and learning if downtown vandalism was a one-off this past summer, or if it will become a perennial concern. Thank you for your work. Please represent us citizens by funding the core grant and opposing amendments that diminish the personnel in our police force, current and in training. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Dan Fitch of East Gorham Street, to be followed by Wendy Reichel.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. We have a hand up. Alder Balday.
Yes, Alder Balday.
Yeah, so thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to ask how many people registered for the operating budget, and how do you want to go about questions for those who testify? I am just thinking, if there's a lot of people who are registered and we want to wait to the end, some of them would have been gone. And I think, personally, I have some good questions that I think I would like to ask, so just wanted to check with you on that.
Thank you, Alder. We have quite a number of folks registered on the operating budget, so unless there's objection from the body, we'll take 10 registrants at a time and then pause for questions. Any objection? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed with that. Thank you, Alder. So we will turn to then Dan Fitch of East Gorham, to be followed by Wendy Reichel.
Howdy. I'm going to keep it real quick. I want to emphasize that budgets are moral documents, like previous speakers have said. COVID is only increasing disparities along racial lines. We should invest in our communities, not necessarily the police. I like the plans to deal with mental health over punishment. Thank you for listening. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Wendy Reichel of 2K Boulevard, to be followed by Daryl Broadridge.
Good evening. On a recent Saturday afternoon, while kids were trick-or-treating near an apartment complex on the west side, gunshots rang out, and a family's loved one didn't survive. Even before the shock of this latest homicide in our city wore off, political arguments erupted online, and one of the narratives I saw was that having more police officers wouldn't have stopped a tragedy like this. But that's not exactly true. Perhaps patrol officers aren't going to prevent a homicide. They can't stop most burglaries or violent crimes from happening because they would have to be at the exact right place at the exact right time. They are mostly reactive. Their work is determined by calls for service, so they respond after someone has called 911. But Madison doesn't have a completely reactive police force, yet, although it may very soon. In Madison, we pride ourselves on our progressive, diverse, proactive police department. We have neighborhood officers, community policing teams, and core and gang officers, who have the time to build relationships and trust with the people in the community because they don't spend their shifts rushing from hit-and-runs to domestic disputes to weapons calls. They can use their time to identify and solve problems in neighborhoods, or partner with the community on youth programs and restorative justice alternatives, all which can help prevent more crimes from occurring in the first place and can lead to fewer arrests. An MPD lieutenant told me recently that these community officers, the ones whose positions will most likely have to be eliminated, or vacated, or furloughed as a result of this budget, are able to solve long-term and repetitive problems because they have the time to spare, and they can invest in people and relationships. If you give them the time, those community officers are happy to tell you stories about how they've prevented crime and gun violence. And if you take a ride along with a patrol officer, you'll see how they often consult these specialty police officers, especially neighborhood and mental health officers, to get background information that can help them diffuse or deescalate incidents much more quickly and with positive results. Another lieutenant told me that residents in some of the higher calls-for-service areas on the west side have been asking for their neighborhood and community officers by name, and wondering why there have been less police presence at a time when gun violence is breaking records. It's because our police department is short-staffed and is having trouble maintaining the hard daily staffing minimums. Less than one week after that homicide off Gammon Road, our city had an attempted homicide at a bowling alley. 75 shell casings were recovered, and our city is inching very close to reaching 1,000 recovered shell casings for the year. That would be double the number recovered over all of last year. Some of those bullets have tragically changed some families' lives forever. Others have thankfully only hit vehicles and buildings. But with that many bullets flying around, some in broad daylight, we are extremely fortunate that there have only been 11 tragic homicides this year and not dozens more. Chief Wall can tell you that MPD is also short of enough detectives, investigators, to solve crimes. The people in those positions can also help prevent crimes because they help get suspects and guns off our streets. And in the process of their investigations, they often uncover other illegal activities and plans, and they can consult with neighborhood officers and gang officers to head off further incidents or violence. The mayor has capped next year's recruit academy at 39, which is very unlikely to even keep up with attrition, and it makes it very difficult for the city to have the additional 13 officers needed to take over policing for the town of Madison. Those officers must be in next year's recruit class in order to graduate on time. The finance committee amendment will reduce the recruit class by another five or six officers, and then Chief Wall still has to fine $1 million in cuts, which will no doubt lead to more police or recruit positions cut. Those eliminated positions are not going to include reactive patrol officers. They're going to force our police department to cut its community officers, the problem solvers, the very officers who can help investigators quickly find suspects and witnesses after a violent incident, and who can help prevent unnecessary arrests because they've built relationships and trust in the community. By taking money from MPD and reducing the recruit academy during this record-breaking violence, and in the midst of the stress and uncertainty during a pandemic, you are putting public safety in a precarious position, and you're sending a message to residents, many of whom are some of our most vulnerable, that public safety is not a priority, and that you'd rather have a department that can patch up problems until next time rather than solve them permanently. Please vote to support Amendment 10 to accept the COPS grant, and please find a way to restore funds to MPD's 2021 recruit academy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Daryl Broadridge of Picking Rock Road, to be followed by Gary Halverson.
Daryl, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself. There you go.
Daryl, go ahead.
Hey. Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Mayor and Alders, for all you guys do. I'm here today to express support for the federal COPS grant, and I see that there was a-- the budget amendment 11 came up, and I'm opposed to supporting that. I want to adequately staff the police force, which I feel is just an absolute essential to a safe community, especially for the vulnerable among us. There's an alarming increase in the number of shootings and car thefts and home invasions, and the discussion of cutting $1.25 million from the police budget is pretty alarming to me. As a victim of one of those kinds of crimes, I value the police presence in my neighborhood. When they drive by, it's great for me to see them with a presence, interacting with the community, and establishing relationships, and promoting cooperative environment. It requires officers that are present in the community. I don't believe that the best way to solve the problem is to permit the loudest voices to be the only ones to listen to. I believe the elected officials are duty-bound to seek understanding beyond those voices and to seek out common citizens whose life is not politically driven in order to gain a more complete perspective. Problems are not solved by one side simply dominating the conversation and making threats to get its way. When we allow ourselves to react to the loudest voice, we no longer hear or see the entire community. It's a matter of balance that I feel we've lost in the noise of threats. Changing the functions of and reallocating the budget of the basic taxpayer service like our police department is based upon a substantial belief that the MPD is the problem with crime, or that police officers are actually making us unsafe flies in the face of common sense and belies reality, and all statistical evidence. Because someone says it's in a book, or says it loudly, or actually believes that, it doesn't make it true. I soundly reject the notion that hiring more officers will somehow make us unsafe. Has any community-wide survey been done to substantiate the notion that we all feel that way? Has a study been done to demonstrate that the other governmental agencies are capable of taking on the responsibilities for situations that the police are now dealing with? Has a budget study been done to demonstrate that it won't actually cost more to make those kinds of changes? It seems that if we've allowed the national narrative to drive our local conversation about the MPD, they do outstanding work in our community and deserve the resources and cooperation of our elected officials as we seek to improve relationships across all segments of our community. We are human, and we are always-- and we always need to be on our guard against bad actors and those who are not suited for duty. Decades of hard work that the MPD has done to address internal challenges, community needs, and crime, and to keep itself to the highest standards in our nation can be undone in one budget cycle. The most vulnerable among us do not have the loudest voice, or a super-organized attack approach that is needed in order to get noticed in today's political environment. There are effective ways of doing things, but are they good? The notion of any means necessary seems to rule our politics and our political discourse. our political discourse. Even the indiscriminate destruction of personal property has become a viable tool to get what you want. As I boarded up my friend's looted business on Stay Street, I saw the stunned disbelief and bewilderment over the lack of civil discourse in what seemed like a city government that was okay with it. On what basis do we now come together? Will there be a widespread invitation to put for input, or do we make decisions out of fear and threat of more violence if its demands are not met? Our ability to be a functioning community lies in the balance. I implore you to take the COPS grant and to help our citizens that serve on the MPD to continue to provide adequate levels of community support.
Sorry, 20 seconds.
Again, Mayor and Alders, I thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gary Halverson of Glacier Hill Drive to be followed by Joseph R. Keys.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Alders. I was born in Madison, and I've lived here most of my adult life, except for when I served in the military. 2020 has brought us the COVID-19 pandemic, which has caused tremendous stress on the residents of Madison, as well as our small businesses, healthcare systems, and government services. The city budget is facing a tremendous gap, and tough decisions are having to be made in order to balance it. In light of these extraordinary circumstances, I can see the necessity to reduce funding for city departments. However, I do not agree that we should look to reduce funding for Madison Police Department. We all should know that the primary function of MPD is to provide 24/7 patrol coverage, so that when we have an emergency and call 911, we can expect a timely response. According to the 2019 Patrol Staffing Report, which I hope all of you are familiar with, there were 391 instances occurring in 244 dates where MPD's patrol response was limited to emergency and priority calls. The report also stated that a member of the community calling for police assistance had a greater-than-one-in-10 chance that MPD call response was limited. That was 2019. As we all know, 2020 has been a year unlike anything any of us have seen in our lifetimes. Spring of 2020 brought peaceful protests for racial justice, which we all support. Separate from that were individuals who sought to bring destruction to our city, which required MPD to establish a downtown command post. This command post requires 93 officers to effectively operate when needed. Staffing of this command post requires neighborhood officers to be pulled out of the neighborhoods. I live in the Ridgewood neighborhood, District 17, on the East Side. In all my years living in Madison, I've never experienced the level of crime that has been occurring in our neighborhood. We've had vehicles racing down North Thompson Drive actively engaged in a shootout. We've had high-speed chases tearing through the Glacier Hill Drive during the day when people are out walking dogs and children are riding bikes. My fear is that some kid will be trying to cross the street and get struck by one of these individuals. We have also had an increase in thefts at grocery store parking lots. Imagine coming out of the grocery store and while putting your groceries in your car, someone distracts you while another individual grabs your purse or phone or wallet. Over the summer, there were nearly nightly reports of people driving slowly through the neighborhood at 3:00 a.m., jumping out of cars to check for unlocked vehicles. I have talked to many neighbors who have been victims of theft because they made the mistake of not locking their car. Usually, following a vehicle break-in would be a house burglary because they had stolen garage door openers and were able to come back and gain entry into the house. Have any of you encountered an unknown individual in your house in the middle of the night? Due to all of this, my wife and I started hosting neighborhood safety and awareness Zoom meetings to encourage our neighbors to follow the tips provided by the MPD's Good Neighbor Project. I'm concerned that the MPD community programs like that will no longer exist due to reduced funding. There's a lot of talk of how the police need better training. I don't think there is anyone in MPD who would disagree. They want to send officers to additional training, including mental health training. Officers would like to have the time to take additional training. The problem is, is when staffing is inadequate, there is no time for officers to go to additional training. How can we ask the chief to choose training or have enough officers to respond to 911 calls? The only option is to ensure adequate funding for staffing and training. Reducing funding ensures neither of these are accomplished. The decisions you will make tonight regarding MPD funding will have repercussions on our city for years to come. Transferring $250,000 from MPD to the new crisis response team resulting in a capped police academy will ensure that MPD will continue to be understaffed in years to come. Please do not transfer these funds from the MPD. Not accepting the federal COPS grant will ensure that we will continue to see delayed response times. Please accept the federal COPS grant. Approving Amendment 11 and subjecting MPD to furlough program, the furlough program will result in longer response time and affect morale, which will also lead to additional attrition. Please do not approve Amendment 11. And finally, asking Chief Wall to free up $1 million is an impossible task when the department is already running thin. Please do not put him in that position. Please carefully consider how you will vote tonight because any one of these reduction in funding options will result in a less safe city in 2021, 2022, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Joseph R. Keys of Regent Street, and then we'll pause for questions.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My comments are in support of proposed Amendment Number 10 for the acceptance of the 2020 COPS grant. Madison has seen major increases in crime. The city has just tied its murder rate record. The number of shots fired has totally eclipsed the previous record. At the end of September, there had been 837 shots fired. Of course, that number needs to be increased by at least 75 for the Saturday night gun battle at Shugger Park Town Lanes. The current year-to-date shots fired is now over 930, which is definitely not representative of a safe community. Additionally, crime in Madison is mobile, and those shots fired incidents can happen and have happened in all parts of Madison. Currently, the downtown entertainment district has been powered economically by COVID-19 and violence. This area needs help to restore its once-vibrant retail and restaurant business. A vaccine for COVID-19 should be available in the not-too-distant future. However, Madison residents are hesitant to shop and eat in this area for fear of further violence. The COPS grant is needed so those additional officers can stabilize this area to make it safe again for patrons. What happens if additional offers are not included through this grant? Downtown businesses will fail due to lack of customers. Currently, it is estimated that a third of the entertainment zone restaurants will go under. As my understanding, there is a good possibility that 50% of the entertainment zone businesses, and especially those on State Street, will go bankrupt if customers cannot be incentivized to come downtown and patronize those retail stores and eateries. The customers have to feel safe to come downtown. When this lack of demand materializes, there will be empty storefronts. Rent will not be paid. Landlords will directly ask the city assessor for reduced assessments based on the lack of rents. This will lead to materially reduced property taxes, and is recognized that the downtown entertainment district pays a substantial amount of property taxes to the city of Madison. Additionally, other social service groups like the Beacon and Catholic Social Services support and welcome the addition of those officers. Those agencies face security needs, and those officers will help answer that need for those agencies. I urge you to support and vote for proposed Amendment 10's COPS grants. Finally, I urge you to vote against Amendment Number 11. The amendment, as written and issued to the public, is not fully developed. It lacks transparency as to how the cash shortfall will be balanced in the budget process. Those specific details must be made public for public discussion before a vote can be made on this amendment. Respectfully submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll pause to see if there are questions for any of our registrants on the operating budget so far. I see no questions, so we'll go on then to Sheila Martin of Keys Ave to be followed by Karen Reese.
Madam Mayor, Alder Balday is asking to be recognized.
Alder, please use the raise hand function. Go ahead, Alder.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry about that. So I have a question for Amy Osinga. I don't know if she's still on.
She's here.
She's here, okay. So Amy, I heard your testimony in favor of, you know, funding police and all that kind of stuff. I would like to hear your policy on police practices. What do you think should happen? Because I think it is true that there's a reason why people are talking about police reform. So I'd like to hear what your take is on how we can change some of the particularly bad police practices.
Yes, I think body cams would be helpful. I know there's been some discussion of that lately. I also think additional training. I know Madison police tend to have, I think, 250 additional hours than what's required by the state. I also believe in just like de-escalation, more training and helping to manage mental health incidences. I also know Madison does have a mental health component to the police department that where certain officers are trained with additional mental health experience trainings. That's all I can think of off the top of my head. I mean, obviously, like general justice reform, that's beyond the city of Madison's power.
Okay, so my next question is for Kim, Kim Richmond.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So as you heard from Amy, there's a need for changes. I would like you to speak more to what you think should happen to police officers when killing is involved.
When a police...
When a police officer shoots somebody and the person dies, what do you think the process should be for people to see justice being done?
Well, like Amy had mentioned, body cameras on the officers would be the number one thing to look at. Excuse me a second. Body cameras have got to be on. I know for years and years and years, Madison has not wanted to go with body cameras. My opinion is that they're afraid to see what's really happened. This is my opinion. We don't know what happens in a lot of cases, and we've had to take officers' words for it, but I truly, truly believe in the officers' thoughts and what had happened. But I was kind of prepared here for that. But again, just like Amy said, and I said, and I'll repeat myself, if the officers had body cameras, that would answer a lot of questions. You're seeing a lot of videos of the aftermath of shootings, possibly, and that does not tell the story. That does not tell the story.
So maybe one more question. As you may know, in many cases, obviously those that I'm familiar with, where killing of particularly black people is involved, in many cases, there are no guns involved with regards to the victims. In some cases, in fact, they are walking away from law enforcement and they get killed that way. What do you think should be the consequences of that? I think the frustration and why people are saying defund the police. If I commit a crime today, there is no way I will not go see a judge, and that judge or a jury will determine what happens to me. What do you think should happen in situations like that to police officers? How can we make so that any and every police officer who took a gun and killed an innocent person faces a judge or a jury?
Okay, obviously, I'm not a police officer. I do support them, but when that has happened, you can see that they have been charged with murder. In any of those cases where an officer has shot somebody walking away unarmed or laying on the street and that they've been killed, those police have been prosecuted. Nobody hates a bad cop more than a good cop. So you'll have to take my word for that. I've heard that a million times. But again, those police should be treated no different than any other criminal if it was a flat-out killing. If, you know, there's got to be proof, though.
All right, well, thank you. Those were my questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for our first set of registrants? Seeing none, we'll continue with Sheila Martin of Keys Ave to be followed by Karen Reese.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Sheila Martin, and I'm a longtime resident of the Near West Side. I asked to speak tonight as I'm gravely concerned about the dramatically escalating crime rates we're experiencing across the city and the lack of responsiveness demonstrated in the 2021 proposed budget. As of a few days ago, Madison's violent crime statistics from 2020 have outstripped any year in recent history, categories including homicides, shots fired, stolen autos, and home invasions. All of these statistics are up anywhere from 25% to 76% over 2019. In just the past 10 days, we've witnessed a triple-shooting homicide, including more than 75 shots fired, in a heavily populated area near two schools. We've seen several attempted home break-ins in Midvale Heights, an armed home invasion in Mineral Point in Midvale, which resulted in a stolen vehicle, a high-speed chase, and apprehension of several juveniles already wearing electronic monitoring devices. And most recently, shots fired at Schweigler's Bowling Alley resulting in victim hospitalizations. So my question to you is, what's it going to take? How many more people are going to have to be violated, injured, or killed across our city before you understand the feelings of fear that people are having? Watching these statistics rise while funds are continuously cut from the police force, after all, they are the only people trained and available to support citizens who are victimized by these violent perpetrators. I'm incredibly supportive of trained mental health professionals responding to mental health emergencies, and I'm very grateful to see our city begin to fund this type of responder. However, in your own words, this program is experimental. It will take time to get it resourced, workflows implemented, and data collected to measure its effectiveness. It seems very short-sighted to cut funding to MPD, the only available backup, until there's demonstrated success with the new mental health responder program, especially with the unprecedented complexities of a pandemic, demonstrations, as well as escalating rates of mental illness and violent crime. I implore you to think carefully about the needs of all the citizens you represent, as you are our voice. Please consider passing Amendment Number 10, which would allow MPD to accept the COPS grant funds and preserve the four positions you have slated for elimination. The grant goals of reducing violence and property crime while improving quality of life in the Central District are so critical to our collective well-being. Having a dedicated team for that entertainment zone would also assure that other officers remain available to support the budding mental health team and address the escalating violent crime that is plaguing our city. In addition, I wish to advocate letting the MPD continue as-is budget in order to eliminate the cuts outlined in the mayor's proposed budget and other amendments, such as Amendment 11, which I oppose, and to assure that MPD is well-positioned to incorporate the town of Madison's abilities in 2022. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Karen Reese of Post Road to be followed by Bonnie Rowe.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for listening tonight. I'm here to oppose the Budget Amendment 10 regarding accepting the COPS grant. And for those who are wondering about whether there are studies about if we would be safer with changes, I would refer them to the extensive work and expertise that came under the Ad-Hoc Committee for Policy and Police Procedures. Everything you need to know is there, as well as many multiple nationwide models for the mental health initiatives that are being taken. But I want to specifically address the desire to hire officers to create a downtown entertainment zone. And while this zone might be a newer idea, this budget item seems to come up frequently when we hear about a grant. You know, it's common to think, sure, free money, but we have to realize that if this is approved, it's actually a significant cost that the city is taking on for the next several years. Regarding the entertainment zone, the Common Council accepted a report from the city's Task Force on Equity in Music and Entertainment, which I chaired in February of 2019. The city has made some progress on this, but, you know, through the Planning Department, Arts Commission, and Tourism... The city has made some progress on this, but, you know, through the Planning Department Arts Commission and tourism, but largely there has not been investment from the city to support those recommendations. And while there weren't specific public safety-focused recommendations in that support, there were minimal requests for expenses. For example, we asked for a full-time liaison between the city and the entertainment community for sixty thousand dollars, and we're basically laughed at because we were told there was absolutely no additional funds to support that effort. And there are a number of other more pressing downtown needs that desperately need funding that we've heard about tonight. So to hear the city wants to invest hundreds of thousands into additional law enforcement rather than trying to address root causes is quite frankly a slap in the face. Bar owners of color have routinely been scrutinized, penalized, and shut down for having a high number of police calls and even denied extra support for police presence. But downtown bars get a blank check year after year for policing. Clearly, it's ineffective at presenting, preventing chaos as year after year we hear about the problems on State Street and the six-hundred block of University Avenue, yet we continue to spend more and more every budget cycle on something that does not work. If you want a safer downtown, start penalizing and closing bars that routinely serve underage people and over-serve patrons that end up wreaking havoc at bar time. That will save a lot of money on our police force. With as much money as we spend on policing downtown, we should be able to figure out a more efficient and effective way to do these things and create the downtown entertainment zone with funds that currently exist. The city has routinely increased spending on police for the downtown area rather than looking at measures provided by the community experts largely for pocket change that could reduce the need for so many police. So we need to reinvest that money to, to fund the community experts who have been working for decades on plans that will actually lower crime rates, increase community participation, and increase our public safety for everyone. And there are plenty of, there's mountains of research to support that conclusion. That would be a much more budget-friendly and effective approach, especially when everyone else in the city, everyone, every other department is taking measures of austerity during this global pandemic. All money is not good money, and this money actually costs us a lot more money. So please do not accept this amendment, and please turn down that grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registration is Bonnie Rowe of Somerset Lane to be followed by Jennifer Edwards.
Thank you for the work you are doing to address budget issues alongside the many concerns plaguing our city. I would like to thank Alder Harrington McKinney and Alder Hennick for resubmitting the federal COPS grant amendment to hire four new officers for the State Street Capital Square area. I spend time in the entertainment district and see the growing needs there. Even before the craziness of 2020, this area had seen a substantial rise in violent offenses, homicides, shootings, substantial unaggravated batteries, sexual assaults, and weapons offenses. Crimes our police deal with and solve for people of any color. Violent crime increased thirty percent from 2017 to 2019. Many social service agencies are located at its center, serving vulnerable populations in need of housing, mental health treatment, and/or drug or alcohol counseling. Several wrote letters of recommendation for this COPS grant application because they see the need for more police presence there. Police currently have a positive working relationship with social service providers and many committees, groups, businesses, and neighborhood associations within this zone. After extensive analysis in collaboration with downtown stakeholders, the MPD determined the best solution is a new entertainment zone team. It would focus on problem-solving and working with residents and agencies to address vulnerable populations and quality of life issues. Mayor, you must have understood the critical need for this new team as your signature is on the grant application dated March ninth, 2020. This federal grant has obviously been awarded, and for some reason, the Common Council is debating whether or not to accept it. A lot of time and effort goes into applying for a federal grant, and I don't think it's common to go through the process, be awarded the grant, and then decide not to use it. With the problems compounded in this year by a global pandemic, increased homelessness, protests, and some civil unrest, it seems the team is needed now more than ever. The focus of this team would be on reducing crime, cutting response time, and improving citizen perception of the area, which has recently taken a big hit. We need to transform this vital area into the safe and thriving downtown zone it once was. A dedicated and trusted team will go a long way in restoring this key part of our city, bringing in tourists, businesses, and increased revenue. This increase in revenue could easily pay for the phased-in cost of this small team to the city over the next years. Alder Harrington McKinney and Alder Carter, strong black women on the council, spoke positively about the effects this team would have by building trust and relationships with those who live and work in this zone, as well as the benefits to other parts of our city. Officers are frequently being called from other districts to help downtown. Our MPD values proactive policing, visibility, and community building, not only reactive calls for service. But with the current staffing being so short, the vast majority of every patrol officer's hours is spent on obligated time or reactive patrol, allowing less time for problem-solving and networking. It would also maintain the MPD's authorized strength going into the deep cuts ahead after losing the SRO contract for four officers in the high schools. Please vote in favor of Amendment Ten and put this grant to use. I'm a little concerned with Amendment Eleven that was added late in the process. As a resident, sometimes it's hard to figure out what some of these things mean to even know how to process them. If I understand it correctly, the furloughs are not mandatory, so city employees can choose to take them or not. If they don't take the furlough, there will be a gap in funding or a gap in expense reduction. It looks like there's an expenditure restraint program to address that anticipated gap. But if there's not enough there to cover it, the difference would be made up in the general fund. However, the general fund cannot handle any more spending to cover that gap. So does that mean these are actually mandatory furloughs, or is there another fund intended to cover that gap? I would hope that you would hold off on voting on Amendment Eleven until you are able to disclose to the public how this gap would be funded. There needs to be transparency here. I am in opposition to Amendment Eleven without knowing this information. I have a similar question with the city's idea that MPPOA could reopen its contract as a way to address MPD's imposed significant cut. But being in the fourth year of a four-year contract seems like
Thirty seconds.
to renegotiate. It's the final hour. When that contract was negotiated over three years ago between Mayor Saglin and the MPPOA, it passed council on the consent agenda, including eleven of you current council members here tonight. If there is one thing I would love to see in this city, it would be the city leaders getting together with our police department and other first responders and addressing the serious and growing problem we have with violent crime across our city. We have a problem, and it would be nice to feel like
That's your time. Thank you. Our next registrant is Jennifer Edwards of Norris Court. She's followed by Dan Rolfs.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jennifer Edwards. I'm a longtime Madison resident, and I wish to speak against the acceptance of the COPS grant. There are people who will come after me, who'll be much more eloquent in their arguments. I look forward to hearing from them. But I really urge all members of the Common Council to consider how the police function our community and how that function looks very different for communities of color and for white people. I, I think that there is incredible overpolicing of our communities of color here in Madison and a complete under-resourcing of those same communities in every other respect. I would urge the Common Council to evaluate not just this budget, this, this particular aspect of the budget, but the entirety of the funding for the police force here in Madison. I know there's a lot of proposals on the table that would put resources back into the community with mental health resources, with beginning to address the homelessness crisis that the city faces and a number of other very, very important issues that are not being addressed partially because of the incredible overbudget of the police here in Madison. I, I think that it's also important to evaluate why the system got to this point, why year over year over year we've seen police budget increases. And as many people on this call have already pointed out, we have an increase in violent crime. So what are, what are the police doing? Like, why, what is, what is the point of this? Like, every argument you're making is, sorry, I won't go into that. I apologize, but just we, we can't keep trying the same thing. It's harming members of our community, not having benefits, and just keep funding and increasing funding for the police. It just doesn't make sense. I know members of the council are smart people with great analytic skills. I would encourage considering this. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Dan Rolfs of Oak Ridge Ave representing MIPSY, to be followed by Laura Manella.
Evening, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council members and Alders. I appreciate your time tonight, and I'll try to keep my remarks brief. I'm here in the, as the president of the Board of the Madison Professional and Supervisory Employee Association, MIPSY, speaking in support of the alternate Amendment Eleven as proposed by Alders Bedar, Furman, Rommel, and Foster. We are firmly against mandatory furloughs for general municipal employees. We've already been asked to take no pay raise in 2021, something that MIPSY and our coalition partners agreed to early on in the pandemic. We understand the challenges that the city is facing, but we continue to fall further and further behind our fellow brethren in protective services and believe that there are other ways to balance the budget instead of putting it on the backs of general municipal employees. There are, there are options out there, and one of those options is the alternate amendment to, or excuse me, the alternate to Amendment Number Eleven. And we urge your support for that. Beg your pardon. We believe this voluntary program that's proposed would provide flexibility for employees who need days to assist with their family members or other situations that arise from COVID. And just a sort of a snap survey from our members, there are many members that we have in MIPSY, over one hundred, who have already indicated that they would be willing to take as, as few as one or as many as more than five furlough days. I, I actually had one one member indicate that they would take one day off a week for the entire year. So I believe that there is a way to make that voluntary furlough program work and still meet the needs of the city while ensuring that those employees who are most vulnerable and the least paid are impacted the least or not at all by this program. Finally, I would also like to state our hope that you support the amendment to preserve those positions in the parking utility that were originally slated for layoffs. Finance Committee has already recommended an amendment that keeps those positions and restores them to the budget, and I hope that you will continue that support on through to the adopted budget. As has been said repeatedly, and I'm sure you'll hear again, budget is a statement of priorities, and I urge you to prioritize the employees who provide good and faithful service to our city. Thank you. I yield the balance of my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Laura Manella, who's representing the Madison Attorneys to be followed, uh, excuse me, of Seminole Highway, to be followed by Charles James.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Laura Manella. I'm the president of the Madison City Attorneys Association. And tonight I'm here to speak to you about the furloughs and Amendment Eleven, which you have heard a lot of people mention, but I'm not sure many people are following what's going on with Amendment Eleven. I'm trying to keep up with the different substitutes and alternates that have been proposed. I sent you, the council members, written comments before the latest alternate from Alder Bedar. Ultimately, I don't know which option you will go for. I appreciate all of your efforts to find a creative solution to the problem of not paying the general municipal employees our full wages next year. My association and the coalition opposes mandatory furloughs in any form. If we must have furloughs, we want them to be voluntary and equitable. But before I get into that, I just want to acknowledge the other speakers tonight. People here are speaking to you about matters of life and death, of repairing deep harm in our community, harm specifically against black and brown people. And I want those folks to know that I hear their message, and I hope that all city employees hear their message. Here's my point. I believe the city can afford to maintain our wages next year while also funding programs for racial and social justice that our community badly needs. Please do not pit the general municipal employees against the community or against each other, or against other employee groups, including the employees of the police department. These do not have to be mutually exclusive values, and it's really unfair. City employees of all kinds are working every day and every night to build and support the policies that you're proposing and expanding, to respond to inequities and work towards change. We're also keeping the infrastructure going for everyone in the city. We're crunching the numbers, changing the laws, mowing the lawns, and picking up garbage. All of these jobs are essential for everyone. So we think you should be able to afford to pay us our full wages next year. The furloughs are unfair because they're only being done to some of us, only those who can't bargain. That same group of employees is going to see no raise in twenty-one while other employees are getting a raise. Furloughing some employees but not all is inequitable. It's an inequitable way to balance the budget. We believe that it's possible to find other funds within your budget to pay our full wage without a reduction next year. I understand there's a movement to have more furloughs for people who make more money. And on the face of it, that might seem the most fair. But I want to suggest to you that it's not a perfect solution. How do you know that people at the higher ends of the pay scale don't live paycheck to paycheck? They might be supporting extended family. They might have family members with disabilities. They might have, they might be dealing with the loss of a spouse's income because of COVID or for other reasons. So you can't just assume that just because people make more means that they can afford a lot of furloughs. Now, don't get me wrong, my association does make more money than many of the others, and we're willing to contribute if we have to. But it's an oversimplification to say that we should serve more days across the board. I'm asking you to consider that there isn't a one-size-fits-all solution to this, and really, the cleanest and fairest solution is no furloughs for anyone. If that doesn't work, the best next option would be voluntary furloughs. And among the choices of alternates and substitutes that you have, I'm still not clear which of them are voluntary and which of them aren't. I hope that, you know, in your deliberations tonight, maybe you'll get some more clarity on that point. But again, what I'm urging you is that finding a way to maintain our wages in 2021 without any furloughs, without pitting employees against the community or pitting employees against each other. The best answer is no furloughs, and it's a matter of priorities. Can you find a, thank you. Can the council find a little bit of money to prioritize the general municipal employees and just maintain the wages for those of us who've already agreed, we've agreed voluntarily to take zero raises next year? I hope that demonstrates our good faith towards the city, towards helping the financial situation. We believe the city can afford to pay us in twenty-one without dividing us and fund the programs to begin to address the systemic racism and repair the harm in our community. We think both of those things can be done together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Charles James of St. Clair to be followed by Anna George.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have lived in Madison for over thirty-five years. In the past three years, I have been meeting weekly with a group called Coffee with a Cop at a local cafe. There I have met almost one hundred individual members of the Madison Police Department, officers, detectives, command staff, nine-one-one operators, support staff, captains of the six district stations, and the current chief and his immediate predecessor. Together with other members of the Madison community, I have learned a great deal about the daily lives of especially patrol officers whose job it is to respond quickly to all emergency situations that arise in the city. In the past seven months alone, calls for service by the MPD have escalated to disturbing levels. While many officers have retired or otherwise left the MPD, taking with them their many years of experience working proactively with many communities in Madison, especially with the black community. In most cases, they leave the MPD not only because of the stress of the job, but also because of the feeling that because of the feeling that their work is not being supported at the municipal level. I fear that in the near future, perhaps even by the end of this year, we will lose even more officers. This is a situation we cannot afford to allow to happen. I see that the federal cops grant is a major agenda item on today's common council meeting. I urge you to vote for it. Alders Harrington McKinney and Hannock have been thoughtful and informed supporters of the grant and of the MPD. They see the need for a police force that is well-funded and supported by the community. As I said before on other occasions, the dozens of police officers I've met over the years are hardworking, dedicated, well-trained, proactive, and socially aware professionals who are being put under enormous pressure from groups outside of Madison who see "the police," in air quotes, as "the enemy," also in air quotes, especially for black citizens. We are already dangerously close to reducing the MPD to the point where it can no longer serve and protect any resident of Madison effectively, black or white. We need more, not fewer, police officers. Although it is a small step, the cops grant will help alleviate some of the staffing pressure so that the MPD can employ, deploy officers to the neighborhoods that require service. It is, as I say, a small step, but it's one that I feel has to be taken. I urge you to vote for it. And while I have the floor, I'm also against amendment 11 for all the reasons that previous speakers have given. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Anna George of South Mills, to be followed by Aditya Puguzendi.
Hi, um, I'm Anna George, resident of Madison, um, and I would like to speak in opposition of amendment 10 of the 2021 operating budget. Um, there is extensive evidence that police disproportionately target, um, the communities of color and low-income communities. Uh, expanding police forces, the police force will not reduce crime. Um, instead, Madison must invest in community services that address root causes of crime such as poverty, addiction, and mental health struggles. Um, I, there's a long history of the police, um, disproportion, uh, a long history of the police protecting the property and fragility of rich and middle-class white people at the expense of everyone else. Um, I urge Madison to change the story, don't hire more cops, and, um, help build a better future for all citizens of Madison. I yield my time to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Aditya Puguzendi of High Street, to be followed by Julie Whitaker.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Alders. Thank you for your time. Um, I'm also here to speak in opposition of amendment 10, the cops grant, um, and to respond to some, uh, the other speaker's concerns previously. Uh, I do not think that adding more money to the police budget will, uh, resolve the issues, the fundamental issues that are plaguing our city currently. Um, we've, uh, you can just look at the police budget and see that it's increased by over 20 million within the last five years, uh, which is significantly more than the rate of inflation or the increase of the city budget in general. Has this, despite being the most funded department in the city, we still have people who would like you to believe that the police department is, uh, hanging by a thread and that it is as, uh, underserviced as, more underserved than any other part of our government, which I believe is flatly untrue. Um, especially with, this year, we've, uh, the increase in crime has not, uh, check. The increase in crime has not been resolved by putting more officers on the street. Um, and it doesn't address any of the root concerns why might be more crime this year. In a year where our ci, uh, where we've seen a number of people laid off without any unemployment support, a number of people who are evicted, uh, without adequate legal, uh, protection or representation, um, seeing people getting sick with inadequate, unaffordable healthcare, um, people who are homeless because of landlords kicking them out, uh, none of these problems are resolved by putting more cops in the street and defunding the, further defunding the programs that assist those people. If anything, um, putting more cops on the street and taking away from the social services, it ends up being a self-justifying paradigm because that defunding puts more people in precarious, uh, positions, and that instability is what's more likely to lead in an increase of crime, which will be used to justify further budget increases in the years following. I think that our city should recognize what the true fundamental causes, uh, or, uh, large difficulties facing our residents today are, and we need to invest in, uh, fixing those root concerns, putting, getting people off the streets, uh, with adequate housing, uh, healthcare, um, you know, and other social services rather than, uh, investing further in a institution that criminalizes, locks people up, and absolutely does not make our city safer. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Julie Whitaker of Fox Ave, to be followed by Amy Owen.
Hi, and thank you for, um, listening. Thank you, Alders, for your service to our city. I know this is a really difficult time during the pandemic and the budget cuts and, um, public unrest and deep budget cuts and everything. Um, I've lived in Madison for 28 years. I raised two children here. My kids went to public schools. My grandson was just born here this year in February, so I have a deep connection to Madison. And it's just recently that I've become involved in thinking about public safety issues and racial justice. Um, I know this is a complex issue. I see that there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of polarization just in the people who have registered to, you know, support or, 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 uh, not support, especially amendment 10. Um, I oppose amendment 10. I don't think our city should take this grant. And as somebody mentioned earlier, um, this is not free money. It's money that we get from the federal government, of course, but it also requires that the city is locked into, um, paying a portion of these officer salaries. I am not a police basher. I don't see police as the enemy. I understand that the work that they do is especially stressful. I could never do the work that they do, and I know that we're living in a time where there's a lot of people who kind of see this situation as black and white. Um, I worked with, uh, a community police officer on a garden project several years ago. He and I shoved the dirt together. I learned a lot about community policing. I think it's awesome. Um, when I taught at the UW, I had a panel of women police officers, Madison police officers, come speak to a group of students. Um, I know that most Madison police officers are really decent people on an individual level. Um, I think we have a, a high-quality police force in general. But, on the other hand, I hear a lot of the people, especially at the beginning, speaking, um, with strong concern and passionate voices, seem to be very well-organized, seem to be very well-connected to, um, police in our city, and I hear what is, sounds to me like this strong law and order stance. It sounds a lot like, um, what we hear out of the outgoing president's voice, right? It's very fear-driven. And, um, I, you know, just keeping track of some of the language, people are being violated, they're injured, they're killed in our city, their violence, I heard the word plague so many times. Violence plaguing our city, vulnerable people, businesses going bankrupt, empty storefronts. Um, a lot of that kind of talk, you know, the changing Madison, of course, things are changing. We're experiencing a pandemic. People are unemployed, they're homeless. Of course, there's going to be more violent crime. That's not a surprise. Um, when you look at Madison's data and health and safety, you actually will see that in this year, yes, there's more shootings, yes, there's more, um, you know, in general, uh, violent crimes, but there's been fewer calls for police. So, I think some of what we're hearing is fear-based, and it's also an exaggeration. So, I want us to be really careful about taking what people say at face value. Um, the idea that we, we need police to be protected and safe, I just fundamentally disagree with. I think there are times when we do. I think most of the time, there are other professionals who could handle the work. Um, I have come over the last several months, as, you know, a lot of people have, um, as a, as a middle-class white person in our community who lives in a 91% white neighborhood, I don't have to contend with police violence because it doesn't affect me in the way it does people of color. I want to see us move towards a different version. I, there's pains in this, right? I mean, people are loo, could lose their jobs in the police force. Um, people are gonna, like a lot of the registrars who, um, have already commented, are gonna be, are gonna, are gonna be, um, signing the alarm about, you know, more gun violence and all of that. I don't think, I think that we need to take a deep breath and make a decision based on, on data. And also, some of the exciting young people who are getting involved in politics, all of a sudden, maybe, you know, it sounds a little bit, um, jarring to, to hear the, the passion in their voice, but wow, when I listened to that woman earlier who talked about her brothers being incarcerated and what that's done to her family, that speaks to my heart. Um, this is a long-term issue. It's not something that, you know, we need to immediately get the police in there because we're seeing that increase in gun violence. I want to see us as a city really be progressive-thinking in the way we...
Sorry, that's time.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Amy Owen of Madison, to be followed by Alex Ledesma.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a resident of Madison for only, for over 20 years, a homeowner for 15. I own a data analysis and evaluation business in which I spend a lot of my workday calculating the racial disparities and disproportionals of our city and county and, uh, as well as our state. Uh, so, I think about this a lot, even as a white person. This isn't the city that I'm, that we have right now that I'm seeing that we want, and we're not going to get there, we're not going to see reductions in this issue unless we truly invest in it. So, I'm asking you to please support a city budget that will get us there because it's so past time, please. I am also a victim of a violent crime this year, and I need to let the previous speakers know very clearly how deeply inappropriate it is to hear the names of crime victims in your mouth. If this is not something that happened to you, please do not use the names of people who are suffering, the names of people who are going through trauma, their families who are suffering, for your political agenda. Please do not. I am requesting that you oppose 2021 operating budget amendments number four and 10, and support proposed amendments number five, seven, eight, nine, and 11. So, regarding number 10, this is just not the time to be putting our city on the hook for future law enforcement expenses, when we could instead be investing in different types of safety, initiatives that could create greater community safety and lasting community safety. Uh, for me, funding for housing, public health, parks, libraries, and public art is really critical in these times especially, and provides benefits to everyone regardless of income. Amendments five, seven, eight, and nine will support many of these important areas, and I'm asking for you to vote on these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll pause and see if there are any questions, uh, for any other registrants since we last paused. Seeing none, then we'll go to Alex Ledesma of West Wilson, to be followed by Mike Thompson.
Hi, am I audible?
Yes.
Well, thank you. Good evening. My name is Alex Ledesma, and I'm here this evening to share my grave concerns with the recent proposal to cut MPD's budget, and I'm also here to express support for the grant awarded to our law enforcement officers. For the individuals watching at home, a 5% budget cut amounts to $4.2 million. I'm here this evening to explain to Madison's bureaucratic composition why defunding the police will lead to pernicious damage in our city. First, whatever we decide about the specific burdens of the past, ask yourself, how much irreparable damage will these budget cuts cost communities around the city? The only way to have answers to this question is to have a dispassionate discussion about facts. Cutting funding to MPD, which includes salaries and benefits, will force the department to reduce the number of proactive individuals in the service. To be specific, that amounts to 26 commission positions, 57 hourly positions, and nine full-time civilian positions. Cutting funding for our police department will lead to devastating consequences in our community. Communities such as the ones I grew up in, as a person of color, I grew up in one of Madison's worst underprivileged neighborhoods. I've seen firsthand home burglaries, gang violence, street corner fights, and drug overdoses. Take a quick second and guess, who was there in the front lines to help? No, it most certainly was not the young people in the streets with visceral negative opinions to recent events that has led to the demand of these budget cuts. It was the brave men and women at MPD that risked their lives to go into these neighborhoods, neighborhoods I grew up in, to help the victims of battery, for example, help victims of home burglaries, and help those that have overdosed on a filthy street corner. Furthermore, I'm under the understanding that over 2,000 letters have flooded the city of Madison demanding budget cuts to our law enforcement, and I'm under the impression that the well-organized amanuenses have presented their argument to defund the police. I'm sure they have their reasonings. Many of us watching at home may already assume the reasoning to their conclusions. Perhaps it may include distrust in the police. According to a 2019 Gallup poll, 53% of Americans said that they have confidence in the police, far more confidence than any other institution. That includes our education institutions and our government. In fact, people of color still support the police. I am one of them. Defunding the police means that the neighborhoods that I grew up in would see less community problem-solving services, immediately leaving these neighborhoods vulnerable to crime. To the bureaucratic composition I am speaking to today, it's on you. If you compromise public safety for the need to telegraph a symbolic message to your voting base, a message to defund the police, all the while, crime skyrockets in the city. If this decision passes and continues to persist, it will dare people to commit further harm to the city I grew up in. When the bureaucratic composition in the city of Madison weakens the police, you embolden criminals. So, I'm here this evening to urge you to reconsider the decision to cut funding to our law enforcement. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Mike Thompson of Raymond Road, to be followed by Lila Shima.
So, Mayor, we have a Michael present, uh, with no last name. Would you like me to unmute them and we can see if this mic...
Let's try them.
All right.
Michael, are you Mike Thompson of Raymond Road?
I am not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, then, mic is not present, then.
So, let's go to Lila Shima of Fox Ave, to be followed by Robert Meyer.
Um, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for, um, taking all these comments and listening to your constituents, and thank you for your service to our city. Um, everything has already been so well-stated. I won't take up much of your time. I just want to, um, implore you to oppose amendment 10. Um, clearly, residents of the city are feeling unsafe. We want to feel safe. We want to be protected. Um, and clearly, if we read the research, we understand, as I'm sure many of you do, that, um, increased funding to police does not decrease, um, danger or crime, does not decrease crime in our communities. Um, I am, I live on the Near West Side, which is a mostly white neighborhood. I'm a white person. I understand very well that most white people feel more safe when more police are around, and we, we need to put in effort to understand that that is not the case for our neighbors of color. So, um, I implore you to adjust the bu, budget so that you are investing in, uh, services that actually decrease crime, decrease the root of crime, rather than increasing funding to the police. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Robert Meyer of Wedgewood Way, to be followed by Beth Falkos.
Robert is not present. We do have Beth.
So, Beth Falkos of Countryside Lane, to be followed by Bianca Thomas... Okay, so Beth Fulkos of Countryside Lane, to be followed by Bianca Tomasini.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Alders. I'm a homeowner and a twenty-year resident of Madison. I care deeply about our city and our diverse population. My husband and I came here looking for jobs and opportunities and education for our son. He attended public school and graduated from Memorial. He is now a law enforcement officer in another state. Because of his career path, I have found ways to educate myself about the Madison Police Department. That includes attending a citizens academy, doing a ride-along with a patrol officer, and attending numerous events to talk with officers and command staff. From these experiences, I have come to understand the work of the MPD and have been impressed by the training, dedication, and professionalism of our police department. The MPD is progressive and has a strong focus on community policing, and that makes a difference. I have also been deeply distressed by the racial disparity in our country and the unconscionable violence used on people of color. I have worked to educate myself on racial justice, and I am actively working on these issues. As I follow the news of the rise of, rise in crime in our city this year, I am dismayed and alarmed by the proposals to decrease funding to the MPD. Despite the budget shortfall we are facing, public safety should be the priority. Increased violent crimes, homicides, and shots fired are serious and terrifying. We need appropriate funding for the MPD to combat this and to keep all residents safe. Our police department is under incredible stress due to COVID, protests, and increasing serious crime. Officers are already working unhealthy amounts of required overtime to provide mandatory coverage. When the police department goes to priority-only mode due to protests downtown, neighborhood policing and traffic control suffer. I have personally witnessed numerous examples of reckless driving and dangerous speeding. For the first time since moving here, I am sometimes fearful of driving on certain streets in our city. And I'm fearful of being in a situation where shots might be fired. I am fearful for, for all residents. We need financial support for our patrol officers who come from diverse backgrounds to serve our diverse community. We need financial support for our specialty officers who are doing proactive work and who have deep relationships in the communities they serve. Cutting these programs will only allow crime to rise and our quality of life to erode. We can't have racial healing without safety for all residents. I am in support of accepting the COPS grant in amendment ten, and I oppose amendment eleven. I urge you to keep funding for public safety strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next registrant. Uh, sorry, lost my place in the list. Is Bianca Tomasini of Odana Road, to be followed by Barbara Meyer.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I, I'm a, so a resident for, of Madison for quite, uh, for more than twenty years. Um, and I am against amendment ten and in general uh against more police, adding more police to Madison streets. So we have already, study after study shows that police will not reduce crime. Um, and, and that as a different thing to do, we could, we should listen to the most affected communities who are not usually listened to. Uh, we know that people of color living in poverty especially, uh, which is, this is often due to structural racist policies. They are living under stress and oppression. Uh, also, many studies show that more police surveillance results in more people of color sent to jail. This results in family destabilization, loss of jobs, loss of income, which create even greater stresses. And we have heard this uh being mentioned before, this is a cycle that needs to be broken. Uh, our, our worries for, for, we, so we need to ask why, why people are engaged in, in criminal activity. And I lived for seven years in, in a, in a rich country that has a social democracy and, and within total freedom, actually. And they have sufficient social sa- safety nets for everybody, housing, healthcare, effective education, and there is little poverty, and therefore, there is little crime. As, we have to ask also why we have more guns in town, why people use them. This is not normal, most, most countries do not live this way. And this is the only country where it is encouraged that everyone should wear a gun. Um, and so why are we surprised that people under stress use guns to solve their problems when they don't feel they have other power? We should be asking how to decrease the number of guns in public everywhere. My points are that increases in crime are not going to be solved by more police. Even the police acknowledge this. They know that there are systemic problems they cannot solve. It makes their, their job much more difficult. So solving the systemic racism and gun proliferation problems would be the moral and ethical and more effective thing to do, which would then, then result in reducing crime. Uh, as others have said, this amendment ten will cost, actually, in terms of budget uh discussion, a lot more to the city in the next few years than what is um is, is being talked about. So uh for Alders McKinney and Henneck, uh please use your leadership and tell your constituents who are in, 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 living in fear um of more crime that, that uh police do not reduce crime. You, you have to tell them that. They do restore, they offer the possibility of restoring or recovering property. Um, but do we want a society that keeps valuing property over human lives uh and thriving of, of communities? Let's ask, act differently from the usual and give restorative practice a chance, a really well-funded chance. More police is like a Band-Aid. Instead, let's put the restricted number of dollars we have available into much-needed justified reparation, restoration of communities of color, and, and also reducing the number of guns in our public lives. Fund the stabilization of families, fundamental health initiatives. This would be a different path. And, and let's do something different so that we might actually see, see different results. We keep just adding, doing the same thing and expecting things to change. Well, that's kind of insane, as they say, and in this case, immoral. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next registrant is Barbara Meyer of Wedgewood Way, to be followed by Rachel Christman.
Yes, um, thank you for hearing me. Uh, I want to point out that Robert Meyer is here. I don't know why he wasn't called. His name came up, and then he wasn't allowed to speak. I'd appreciate it if you would allow him to speak after I speak. Is that okay?
We go back every once in a while and catch the folks that we've missed, so we'll, we'll get to him.
Thank you. Um, I'm Barbara Meyer. I, like uh Alex Ledesma, I grew up in poverty. My parents were not well-educated, but they valued education. And I ended up with a ba- a master's degree in library science. And I actually grew up in New Orleans, but I ended up in Madison, Wisconsin, forty-eight years ago. And I joined the uh law school library in a criminal justice collection. And I served Herman Goldstein, Professor Herman Goldstein, at the law school. He was the only law professor without a law degree. And that was because he was a police scholar that was nationally recognized. Herman Goldstein worked closely with Chief Cooper, the police chief in, in Madison all those many years ago. And consequently, Madison has one of the very best police departments in the entire country. This is not a Band-Aid, this is an essential service. And I know personally how important it is, because I'm also a victim. My home was invaded nine years ago. The offender was white, he was forty years old, and he was violent. It was Detective um Ann Turner who came to investigate. This was after the golf, uh golfers, three golfers caught him as he came from my house, chasing me and chasing a pastor who had stopped to help me. The golfers stopped him, held him until the police came. And Detective Turner wa- watched my husband and me. My husband had been brutalized, I had been grabbed, I was about to be punched. I was told that I was going to be raped, but that was not the term that he used. And I was crin- cringing, even though I had had um a, a class in, 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 in self-defense. I was terrified. But I wa- I followed Detective Turner through the whole process. And that culprit is caged, I hope he stays that way. He was sent for twenty-three years, not just because of the invasion in my home, but because he also had um one of those ankle bracelets. I didn't see it, I found out about it later. He was supposed to be out looking for a job. He came to my home instead. He never asked for anything. It was violence that he wanted to perpetrate, that's all he was interested in. It was terrifying. But Madison's police department saw me through, saw us through this, and I am so grateful. It's ridiculous, it's absolutely ridiculous at a time when crime is increasing in Madison that we're talking about considering decreasing the police department. And the people that talk about defunding the police department are absolute lunatics. When they are victimized, they're not going to call on one of their neighbors. They're not going to call on someone else that uh, is some, in, someone in poverty, someone that's sympathetic. They're going to call on the police department. It's ridiculous not to fully fund them. I urge you, I urge you to reconsider. That's not to say you mustn't look at social problems. I understand that. It would have been nice to have my own social problems, as I grew up in poverty, have those addressed. There was nothing there. I'm seventy-eight years-
Thirty seconds.
I didn't have that. Thank you very much. Fund the police department, fund COPS grant.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Rachel Christman of Jefferson Street in Oregon, um to be followed by Lindsay Lund. Do we have Rachel?
Rachel, you should be unmuted.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Hey, thank you guys so much for being here. Um, while I absolutely understand uh everybody talking about feeling scared tonight, I would have to ask you, do you have any idea how it feels to be a black person in public? Have you ever listened to the experiences of the black community in Madison without commenting or judging? Because all the people here are talking about crime statistics and thanking the police for serving them so well, it's very clear that you feel the police are there to serve you and you alone. We have a UW Madison staff member who felt comfortable enough to run over people on his motorcycle when Biden won. Many of the talking points raised today are da- dated and irrelevant. Many people all over the United States are calling to defund the police. You racist old white people, get with the times. How dare you raise up the name of Nisa while you advocate for the very structures and institutions that killed her? How dare you? These people are clearly speaking from their whiteness, it's very clear just by listening. And when you talk about these crime statistics, you need to look at the whole picture. Minimum wage in Wisconsin has, how long has it been the same? Seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And yet rent has gone up and up and up. People that are disenfranchised from our system, who are not able to own homes because their families were not able to get credit because the banks have race, had racist policies. I mean, these things, talking about, oh, I'm a homeowner, oh, okay, that's wonderful. But that doesn't make you any more of a person than all these other people that are talking. Um, what we need to do is fund things that will um give support to desperately needed social services, and amendment ten does the opposite of this. Um, I'd also like to say that, you know, there are, there are officers on the police force right now that are murderers. Um, we just passed the, the eighth anniversary of um Polly Henin's death. And I was in high school when Polly was killed. Um, he's a cousin of a friend of mine, and, and that was actually really my first experience with police violence was um when the officer, um Stephen Hymnsness, shot Polly downtown. Um, please, you guys, people are out on the streets right now. They're cold, they're hungry. Um, these times are unprecedented, and we need to do something drastic and unprecedented to match the times. Thank you all for your service, and um I concede my time.
Thank you. Uh, our next registrant is Lindsay Lund to be, uh Dayton Street, to be followed by Ron Ratz.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Um, so I'm calling to ask the council to oppose amendment ten for the COPS grant. Um, Madison's police budget is consistently increased year over year. And so if crime is increasing, what does that tell us about the safety that police supposedly provide us? Um, doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result is the definition of insanity. I think someone else said that earlier too, and that was exactly what I was thinking. Um, policing is not preventing crime in the way that many of us, especially white people who grew up in Madison, were led to believe that it does. It doesn't make us safer, it certainly doesn't make our communities of color safer. Um, uh, as someone who, who lives two blocks off of East Washington, I can tell you that police do nothing to stop dangerous drag racing weekend after weekend. And I've lived in Madison almost forty years with a little gap in between. Um, this has been going on my entire life. Um, it, it's, and I, I'm also very puzzled by the idea that MPD is under-resourced and that police don't have time to get to neighborhoods for calls. I can tell you that they have time to respond when my bitter, sad, complainy neighbor calls the police over and over because he doesn't like that there are children playing outside. Um, last week it was, he didn't like that um someone was having a socially-distanced fire with three people around it. Um, I can tell you that officers show up, spend, spend time and resources um responding over and over to calls like this. Um, so, s- I mean, tell me wha- tell me how MPD is under-resourced, if this is what, if, if they have time to, to do that kind of call. Um, those of us opposing amendment ten and asking for decreases in police funding want everything that people who say they want more police and more funding police for police want. We want the same things, we want safety, we want healing, we want resources. Um, but policing does not, does not address the root causes of, of crime or what people um consider to be crimes. And doubling down on policing is short-sighted. Um, we really need to be investing in, in social services and housing and preventing homelessness. I believe that Madison um can, you know, can address these problems and, and can do better um with our, with our great resources. Even, even in this time of pandemic and, you know, economic crisis and all of that, this is still a very highly-resourced community. And um we are not, we are not putting our money in the, in the correct place. I, I hope that um, I hope that some of you, I hope that all of you are, are paying attention to um to what people are telling you about the problems with policing. I hope you're reading, I hope you're reading Miriam Kaba, I hope you're reading Ruth Wilson Gilmore, I hope you're reading Alex Patel. Um, I hope you're, you're actually um talking to the people who are, who are asking um, you know, asking for, for less resources for policing and for the- and for those resus- resources to go other places. Um, it sounds like a lot of people are- are very, very fearful. Um, and it sounds, it sounds a lot like, um, you know, make Madison great again. And I think um we all know what that kind of resembles uh in a larger context. In a- in a, in- in this country, it's a, it's racist. It's um, it's not what our community should be looking at. So, thanks, that's all I have to say for now. I'm opposing Amendment 10. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Ron Gratz of High Point Road, to be followed by Benny Ramirez.
Looks like Ron is not with us, but Benny is here.
Right, Benny Ramirez of Franklin Street, to be followed by Judy Blueall.
Benny, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself. There you go.
Thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to reiterate some of the futility in the police preventing crimes. In 1970, there was a study done in Kansas City by George Kelling. And he, and this is amidst the crack epidemic happening nationwide. And Kansas City was riddled with violence and violent crime. There was the Preventive Control Group, which did the same random meandering about the city. There was a group that divided the city into no patrols and simply responsive. And then there was a section of the city that doubled and even tripled the preventive patrol. And the experiment concluded that no change happened in any of the groups. This is 1970s, Kansas City, massive violence, massive disparities. To quote Malcolm Gladwell in his book, Talking with Strangers, patrols turned out to be a charade. Members of the council, I'm asking you, are you willing to put money into a charade when people are out in the streets dying from hunger and the cold? To quote the captain of the NYPD in the 1970s, Lee Brown, "This country's social problems are well beyond the ability of the police to deal with their own." And what I'm saying to you, members of the council, is that there are alternatives. We have seen in our county, the Kahoots model being attempted to be implemented. We are seeing calls for folks to do something different. This is your opportunity to do something different. Not increasing the police by, with 10 more officers. It's futile. It's redundant. And most importantly, it continues to perpetuate harm against my community. You're not the one getting the calls here at the YWCA asking for housing. You're not the one having to tell them that there aren't that many resources existing presently. Would you like me to forward their, your number to them? Would you like me to forward the number of the new, next 10 officers that you're trying to hire? Is that what you're really telling me? Because what you're, at the very end of it, again, we have to keep this big picture centered. There are folks who engage with the police and engage with the school, the prison pipeline. Three out of ev- three out of four black children are living in poverty? And you want to tell me that 10 more police officers are going to solve that? And I've been hearing from all of these yuppies from the West Side that they're afraid. The only thing that they're afraid of, the only, because I'm out here on the streets every night. I live on Franklin. I walk up to the hill and I'm downtown. And I don't know, I'm not fearing for my life. I'm not scared. I'm the black and brown folks out here in the streets that these yuppies out here are telling me that they're afraid of. Yes, I recognize that crime in our city is going and increasing. I've lived in this city my whole life. And I'm telling you that this uptick in crime is specifically because you have robbed us of opportunity. You have robbed us of funding. You have robbed us of our education. You have continued to rob our communities and instead fund the police. So this call is not to defund the police, it's to refund the community. Refund the community, full stop. There's nothing more you can do to, to make this city safer than to provide the social networks that are going to prevent the immensity and destructive force acting on our communities. Our young children and adolescents and teenagers turn to gangs because they provide the social networks that are not allotted to them because their community has been robbed from them. Thank you, members of the council. And I'm a- I'm against Amendment 10. Full stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Judy Blueall of Oak Creek Trail, to be followed by Mia Masak.
Good evening. I've lived in Tamarack Trails for the last 34 years. I love the friendly neighbors and we have beautiful walking trails. But now lately, I've felt uneasy walking in my community. At first, it was the daytime break-in at my neighbor's house this summer. Then we had purse snatchings at the gas station around the corner during the day. Two Saturdays ago, three people were shot and one died in the neighborhood that borders Tamarack. Neighbors of mine were walking their dogs and children were playing nearby in the park. Now we're all wondering, are we safe here anymore? This is not the time to cut funding for our Police Department. I've gotten to know dozens of officers over the last couple of years, and I've learned what they do. They are professional and kind. And they care about our community and want to build relationships with us. That happens most with the community officers who have time to build bridges of trust and work with other agencies and organizations to solve problems. And that can prevent crimes in the first place. Crime has increased considerably in our city this year, and it only seems to be getting worse. This is not the time to cap the re- recruit, the Recruit Academy and take $1 million from MPD, which will result in loss of even more office officer positions. I ask you to please accept Amendment 10 for the COPS Grant and oppose Amendment Number 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Mia Masak of Superior Street.
Mia, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself. Looks like you're unmuted.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I appreciate this time. A quick shout out to those who have spoken before me. I guess I am a proud, air quote, lunatic. Because a lot of y'all on this agenda item speak from a face of privilege. You don't feel safe, but welcome to everyday life as a person of color. How are you going to say that our idea for solutions are ridiculous while offering no substantial answers of your own? Or that everyone here deserves to feel safe, yet all you're talking about and seemingly fixated on is yourself? If you knew the first thing about our most vulnerable, you would not support this. And doing so suggests that you're more comfortable with officers killing us than you are willing to assist in the healing and the wellness of our collective. I can only pray that you are really listening. Let the record reflect that I am in opposition of operating Budget Amendment 10. It's impossible to keep track of the amount of lives that have been taken by people carrying badges, both sworn in, but who are they protecting and serving exactly? How could it even be plausible to think about bringing more onto the force when we're still out here on the streets demanding murderers in blue be reprimanded for their repulsive brutality, specifically against anyone who is not considered white? According to data collected by the Institute for Criminal Justice Training Reform, police departments on average require officers to complete 672 hours of basic training before joining the force. For sake of perspective, you should know that barber students usually have to put around 1,500 to 2,000 hours into their hairstylist courses and training. Have we considered putting these projected funds toward our pre-existing cops to hit the books for Human Decency 101, Sensitivity, History, Ethics, and Mental Health classes? Focusing on something like entertainment right now sums up the discrepancies in our priorities. You want to put some money downtown? Lease the abandoned apartments for our vulnerable. When basic needs are met by default, that'll co- that'll lower crime. It's not about reform. It's about deconstructing, deconstructing systemic oppression. Thus, we are not begging, this is a demand, to defund the police and fund communities. Further militarization isn't a worthwhile use of time, energy, or resources. Explain how these issues could be prioritized or take precedent over the pressing need to help our homeless as winter approaches. Even just today, this major shift in weather impacts us all in different ways. Imagine freezing to death. No shortage of squad cars, yet there's starvation right here in our city. Solely just mere examples of what should be more important than continuing to instill fear, lead with intimidation, and further traumatize. It's creeping up on six years since Tony Robinson was shot dead as a result of authorities not following protocol and being ignorant as to how to handle a child during crisis. Imagine losing a loved one by the hands of a two-time killer, yet there's been no justice served. Has anyone encountered an intruder in the middle of the night? Uh, yeah, her name was Breonna Taylor. What if your family member was shot dead in their sleep after an unlawful entry by the law? And the perpetrator got in more trouble for a hole in the drywall as opposed to bullets piercing human flesh? Think about someone with their knee on your neck, crushing your windpipe to the point your lungs essentially collapse, suffocating you to death. Would you still be calling them heroes? Not to mention the two recently unsolved suspicious cases in Winona, from which footage released has been refused and their families haven't been granted any sense of consideration or closure. I don't have to ask what you'd think about what should happen to a cop who stole the life of someone you care about. You'd want them to burn. Why aren't they held to the standard we as constituents are? I could go on, but ain't about a list to let y'all cut me off. So let's clean up these messes before we move on. Fire Matt Kenny. Thank you.
Thank you. Pause and see if there are questions for any of this set of registrants. All right, seeing none. Um, also see if we have any of the registrants that weren't present when we called them Tannen, Scriber, Mike Thompson, Robert Meyer, or Ron Gratz. Do we have any of those?
I've not seen any of those people. Um, but we were possibly trying Robert Meyer's wife again to see if Robert could speak through her account.
Okay.
So.
Barbara Meyer. Here's Bob.
Yeah. Hello, thank you.
We're getting a significant echo from you. I don't know if you've got the, the meeting on in a different device, but if you could mute that, we could hear you better.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to uh point out some statistics uh that come from the Washington Post database. The police fatally shot nine unarmed blacks and 19 unarmed whites in 2019, according to this Washington Post database. In 2018, there were 7,407 black homicide victims. Assuming a comparable number of victims in 2019, those nine unarmed black victims of police shootings represent 1/10 of 1% of all African-Americans killed by homicide in 2019. For speakers then to emphasize, you know, how police are brutalizing the black community makes no sense to me. It's not in agreement with the facts. No. I've been a resident of Madison since 1972. Uh, I'm, I'm also, should add, I'm, as my wife pointed out, I'm a victim of crime. Uh, we had a home invasion. Uh, a white person who beat me up and threatened to assault my wife. Uh, and I'm appalled by the potential increase in violence beyond what we already have here in Madison. I think that cutting the funding for the Police Department, rejecting the COPS Grant, will only send the message, as a message was sent by the tolerance of the looting and vandalism on State Street, that Madison is a place where violence is tolerated. I don't believe that should be the case. And I urge the council to reject the notion that cutting funding on the police is going to improve the violent situation in Madison. It's only going to make it significantly worse. I personally had enough of violence and I don't want to see it increased. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Um, we've reached 8:30. We've got about 30 more registrants. Um, Alder Henick?
Yes, I was just going to ask for a 10-minute recess, if it's um a good time to do that.
Alder Henick moves a 10-minute recess. Is there a second, Vice President Abbas?
Second, please.
Who's moved in second to take a 10-minute recess? Is there any objection to reporting unanimous vote in favor of a 10-minute recess? Seeing no objection, we will recess for 10 minutes. That will bring us back at 8:44. All right, Madam Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you. All right, so we will resume the public hearing with Holly Marley-Hentson of Sherman Ave., to be followed by Evan Fleitner.
So, it looks like Holly is not with us, but Evan is.
Right, so Evan Fleitner of Bainbridge Street, to be followed by Fred Mose.
Hi, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, well, hello, and thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. My name is Evan Fleitner, and I'm registering my opposition to Amendment 10 of the proposed operating budget. I'm born and raised on the Far East Side, and I've lived in Madison my whole life and still live on the Far East Side today. Right now, I'm a graduate student at UW, where I research blood cancer. And so, I'm a scientist, and so, of course, when you present me with a problem, I'm going to analyze the data before I make a conclusion. In this situation, the problem is, how do we prevent crime? And the conventional wisdom on this issue has been, oh, we expand our police department, we increase the number of patrols, we increase the number of arrests. However, the data on this matter is extremely clear. Not only does increasing police funding not reduce crime, it disproportionately targets and punishes the already marginalized members of our community, namely those who are poor, or black, or brown in our city. In the last ten years, the Madison police budget has increased almost forty-four percent from sixty-point-five million dollars to the new proposed budget of eighty-seven million dollars. In 2004, black residents, who make up six percent of our city, were issued fifteen percent of traffic violations and twenty-nine percent arrests. In 2018, black residents, now up to a whopping seven-point-five percent, were issued twenty-five percent of traffic violations and forty-three percent of arrests. And yet, despite what some are saying tonight, violent crime in Madison has remained the same over the last decade. According to FBI violent crime statistics, in the last ten years, violent crime in Madison has risen by about three percent. In addition, the homicide rate has not increased in a statistically significant manner in the last twelve years. It was two-point-five-nine per one-hundred thousand residents in 2008, and it is currently at two-point-six-seven per one-hundred thousand residents this year. So, we are spending all this money, year after year, it's not reducing the crime rate, and it's very clearly disproportionately hurting the black community of Madison. Why are you still supporting this? Why are you okay with spending so much of the taxpayers' money on something that is not only ineffective, but downright harmful? And even if you want to ignore the data, you can't ignore the people. And as the protests over the summer and the fall have shown everyone, and as the majority of public comments tonight show, the people are fed up with the status quo. We need to stop throwing money at the police and start spending it in a responsible way that actually builds up our city and our communities. Again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, and I encourage you all not only to vote against Amendment 10 of the proposed budget, vote against the COPS grant, but in the future, to start taking our money that is being wasted on the police and use it to fund economic development, affordable housing, and public health. The data show, and the people know, that the current system is not working. It's time to do something different. Thank you, and I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Fred Mose of North Carroll Street, to be followed by Madeline Saul.
Looks like Fred is not present. Madeline is with us.
So, Madeline Saul of Williamson, to be followed by Michael O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and to the alders here this evening. I know this has been long, long for you, but we appreciate the opportunity to share our thoughts. I would like to register my opposition to operating budget amendment number ten, and would ask that the alders turn down the COPS grant for additional officers. I really, truthfully, Mia said most of what I would have said at this juncture, but what I think is key here, especially for those constituents who were in support of the COPS grant, to understand is that your safety, when it is the first, or second, or some small number of times that you've felt unsafe, when compared to the ongoing lack of safety felt by communities of color, is stark, and you should consider the extent to which you are impacted differently than other people who live in the same city. I'd urge those people to listen to the speakers who spoke personally and specifically about their safety and livelihood being consistently on the line. I'd also like to speak to the alders that are perhaps not understanding the extent to which their actions impact disproportionately communities of color with reference to the police department. And I understand you may be on a new journey for understanding what anti-racist thought and behavior looks like, but in that case, I believe if you're on that journey and are not willing to listen to your constituents, you're probably not fit for office at this stage either. And we're watching, and if you continue on this path, we will take action to vote you out and replace you with people who are willing to listen and are willing to support the needs of the people. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Michael O'Brien of Rockwell Drive, representing Local 236, to be followed by Amelia Roy-Comer.
So, we do have the Michael. We can open his mic up and see if he's Michael O'Brien.
That'd be me.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'd talk tonight about how I feel about the way you created the budget for 2021. The plan is to not pay employees their current salaries, like earlier speakers talked about. We did come to grips with not having a raise, but then creating mandatory furloughs to fund your budget. It seems like progressive equity and justice fairness rings sort of hollow when you start talking about taking money away from your employees. I don't feel the equity or justice, nor does it seem progressive. And the conscious choice by the mayor and finance to diminish the select group of people. The one-point-two million dollars is a very small portion of the three-hundred-and-forty-nine million dollar budget you've created. And instead of siding with your employees, you choose mandatory furloughs. This shows employees a complete disdain for their service. This body, meaning the council, has always stood by its employees and should do so once again, and repudiate the divisive politics and find a solution. Even in what the discussions have come before, we haven't even had, we don't even have a plan in place that if projections end up being rosier, or if the real world is rosier than what is projected, that people could be made whole from this. I ask you to stand up for your employees again and reject the furloughs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Amelia Roy-Comer of Arena, Wisconsin, to be followed by Gregory Galumbiak.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to start off with, I don't know if she's still on the call, but thank you, Alder Donna Moreland. You served with objectivity when it was so needed, and integrity always. Sad to see you go. Thank you so much. Apparently, experience as a victim of crime and spending time with the police makes white people more credible in this discussion, according to all the white people talking. Not all of them, but a lot of them. You know, more credibility in this discussion on how to spend public safety dollars, right? So, I'll start with mine. I am a sexual assault survivor. I have been sexually harassed for most of my life, what girl and woman hasn't. I was physically assaulted twice as a teenager. I became an overnight volunteer with Rape Crisis as a very young adult. I grew up around severe addiction. My mother had a stalker for thirty-seven years. I've been robbed. My friend and housemate Polly Henin was murdered by a Madison police officer, Steve Heimsnis. I co-founded the Community Response Team with several other community members, including retired MTD captain of Training and Personnel, Sherry Maples. I have done ride-alongs, including one that involved a response to an eleven-year-old waving a gun around at a bus stop. This was shortly after Tamir Rice was murdered. I co-founded Equity and Justice in Dane with members of Freedom, Inc. and Urban Triage in March Day and Night for Black Lives from 2015 on, because what they were asking for is what this nation has provided for white people, fundamental components to a healthy and happy life. I have sat and listened to officers upon officers, and I have attended Teach and Freedom, Inc. I took part in the learning communities of the Leadership Institute, where we learn about impact of our actions and identities. I have served on the United Way Task Force on Use of Force with former MPD Officer Gloria Reyes, now UW Police Chief Kristen Roman, Judge Everett Mitchell, Pastor Rayford, retired Chief Sue Riesling, Teresa Saunders, Anthony Rubin, and Chief Chuck Folk. I have served as an advocate for countless people trying to navigate our local police system, and when MPD could have acknowledged the pain, suffering, fear, and experiences of people...
I have been sexually harassed for most of my life, what girl and woman hasn't. I was physically assaulted twice as a teenager. I became an overnight volunteer with Rape Crisis as a very young adult. I grew up around severe addiction. My mother had a stalker for 37 years. I've been robbed. My friend and housemate Polly Henin was murdered by a Madison police officer, Steve Heimsnis. I co-founded the Community Response Team with several other community members, including retired MTD Captain of Training and Personnel, Sherry Maples. I have done ride-alongs, including one that involved a response to an 11-year-old waving a gun around at a bus stop. This was shortly after Tamir Rice was murdered. I co-founded Equity and Justice in Dane with members of Freedom, Inc. and Urban Triage in March, day and night, for Black Lives from 2015 on, because what they were asking for is what this nation has provided for white people, fundamental components to a healthy and happy life. I have sat and listened to officers upon officers, and I have attended Teach and Freedom, Inc. I took part in the learning communities of the Leadership Institute, where we learn about impact of our actions and identities. I have served on the United Way Task Force on Use of Force with former MPD Officer Gloria Reyes, now UW Police Chief Kristen Roman, Judge Everett Mitchell, Pastor Rayford, Retired Chief Sue Riesling, Teresa Saunders, Anthony Rubin, and Chief Chuck Folk. I have served as an advocate for countless people trying to navigate our local police system. And when MPD could have acknowledged the pain, suffering, fear, and experiences of people dissatisfied with their behavior, people with little privilege, power, and resources, they have instead chosen to double down and tell them in so many words, "Fuck your feelings." And I have witnessed that again and again. I think I've passed the important white person test now, so what I have to say is this. It is not new, but so goddamn tired for ignorant white men to defend something they invented, to bring them comfort at the expense of all others, no matter how much of a failure it is. Funding our police system as a means of crime prevention is nothing but a complete failure. They do it to protect, and then to protect their false sense of, you know, ethics and morals. They say, "We're hearing you. We're hearing about your needs." So what? You're doing nothing. You are funding the cleanup of a broken bridge. Responding to the accidents caused by a broken bridge does not make driving safer. Being present on a broken bridge while people drive on it does not make driving safer. Telling people the bridge is broken while offering them no feasible alternative route does not make driving safer. Now, multiple black and brown women have spoken tonight, urging you to fund the basic needs of their communities, funding that will actually keep people out of the 911 queue. If the police don't have that goal, then we really need them gone. Their goal should be to be not needed anymore. The act of funding basic needs was actually proven to reduce crime right here in Dane County by Judge Everett Mitchell. Prior to becoming an attorney, Everett Mitchell created a program through the Madison Urban Ministry, now Just Dane, that funded and provided residents employment support, treatment, transportation, and education to high-risk adults who had committed serious crimes. This program reduced the rate of recidivism at that time by 65 to 70%. This is crime prevention, because crime is a child, is often the child, of poverty and oppression. Show me the evidence that our police system reduces recidivism. Show me the evidence that it provides the needed components for a healthy life. How has it solved homelessness? When has it created residential, community-based space for people experiencing mental health breaks who need overnight care? When have they solved the shortage and retention rate of black and brown?
30 seconds.
When have they made up the difference that our public health and our public schools need? They haven't. They don't. Please, stop co-opting what it means to defund the police. It means to slowly shift funds to actual solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gregory Galambiak of Jennifer Street, to be followed by Brian Eucombs.
Madison cannot afford continuing to hire more police officers as proposed in Amendment 10. This city has a bad habit of committing itself to unsustainable increases in future expenditures on policing. Moreover, a great deal of research has shown that expanding the size of police force does not reduce crime. The return on investment is essentially zero. Though, just as with climate change, denialist conspiracy pick a few studies that claim otherwise, an earlier speaker cited one. The consensus finding reflected in meta-analyses of all studies performed across decades show no effect on crime. Moreover, even though those studies that assert a positive return, such as one by Chalton McCurry that Blue Lives Matter people like to cite, only claim it for very high crime cities, showing no positive return for cities like Madison. Earlier speaker asserted that proactive policing reduces crime. But in New York City, major crime fell when cops temporarily stopped proactive policing. It's thought that this was due to reduction in localized stress in people already living in precarious conditions. So I ask you to make decisions based on the scientific consensus, not on fear-driven knee-jerk reactions of predominantly older, white, wealthier residents. Increasing police force size doesn't reduce crime, but increases in policing do have substantial adverse effects, disproportionately negatively impacting black and brown lives. In Madison, law enforcement approaches increase the unfairness of our city. They increase the fundamental divide. It seems to me that many are not sufficiently aware of the adverse impacts, so I'll provide here a concrete example. I recently filed a formal complaint against a Madison neighborhood officer who arrested a black teen, Kamonte Thomas, on a bus. The teen had objected to the disrespectful treat manner in which the white bus driver had treated a black mother and her children, and the driver called the police. The responding officer violated the MPD code of conduct. The passengers on the bus all recognized that what the officer was doing was fundamentally wrong. The officer swore at someone filming the incident and threatened the teen with her taser when he wouldn't turn around to be handcuffed. When video of the incident was posted online, MPD tried to kill the story, interfering to try to prevent media coverage. After hearing that I'd filed a complaint and that was sustained, the teen's mother wrote to me, quote, "Thanks so much. With the pandemic, we were not able to pay the citation" that she came back a week later and gave. "My son won't even ride the bus. He's never had any police contact, and he did nothing wrong that night. She assured me that he wasn't getting a ticket or nothing, but came back a week later banging on my door with a ticket for $439." There's very strong, end quote. There's very strong evidence that such police stops of black and Latinx juveniles traumatize kids and lead to increased future delinquency. These kinds of interactions are commonplace. I have heard so many stories like this. It increases hardship for BIPOC communities and increases the fundamental inequalities. Is this what we want to spend our money on? It's self-defeating. If the goal is truly to improve public safety and minimize crime to achieve equity and well-being for all of Madison's diverse communities, evidence-based public health methods of crime prevention are both more effective and more cost-effective than a predominantly law enforcement-based approach, which will always inherently tend to be more reactive and punitive. If you really want to reduce violence and crime, you should divert money from policing to violence and disruption programs with free outreach. You should divert money to programs focused on healthy development, like expanded lead remediation, the Nurse Family Partnership Program, parent-child interaction therapy, and the Becoming a Man program. You should divert funds into targeted interventions for proven risk individuals, like cognitive behavior therapy, dialogical behavior therapy, and motivational interviewing. You should divert funding to substance abuse programs. Right now, in the midst of the pandemic, an unprecedented number of Americans are experiencing mental health crises, and rates of substance abuse have skyrocketed. Nationwide and in Madison, the psychological and economic stresses of pandemic are fueling transiently elevated rates of violent crime. Funding is desperately needed for programs that address the mental health and financial issues people are facing and that are driving this, rather than trying to add police. It's irrational to put money into something that has no return on investment, paying for more officer salaries, and that has such adverse effects at the cost of funding approaches that do have a large positive return on investment. I'll add, as a street criminologist, David Bailey noted in his book, Policing for the Future, quote, "The police do not prevent crime. This is one of the best-kept secrets of modern life. Experts know it, the police know it, but the public does not know it. Yet the police pretend that they are society's best defense against crime, continually argue if they're given more resources, especially personnel, they'll be able to protect communities against crime. This is the myth. Changes the number of police within any practical range will have no effect on crime," end quote. In contrast, appropriate public health approaches have a very strong evidence base for a larger return on investment in reducing crime, returning the investment severalfold, and such programs need much more funding. I'll add, since a few people are talking about their personal experience of being crime victims, that I was experiencing brutality at the hands of an MPD officer. After peaceful civil disobedience arrest, the officer subjected me and two others to what's called a rough ride, joking that he was driving us to the Auschwitz gas chambers. I was in excruciating pain and ended up with severe nerve damage. We shouldn't pretend that all MPD officers are noble and wonderful. I'm not saying that the problem is true of all MPD officers. I have friends who are current and former officers, done coffee with a cop, my brother-in-law's an officer in Pennsylvania, and I really appreciate him, but there are far more effective and less harmful approaches to public safety. Is my time up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Brian Eucombs of Dawes Street, to be followed by Neil Rainford.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor and City Council friends. Thanks, everyone, for your service and for your work on our city budget. I'm asking you to vote against adding more police officers and instead invest in community services. Specifically, I'm asking you to vote against Amendment 10 of the operating budget, the COPS grant. We do not need more police officers, nor do we need to continue increasing MPD's budget. This goes directly against the demands to defund police and invest in the community. In my 20-plus years of living in Madison and working with LGBTQ+ youth in Dane County and across Wisconsin, I have consistently heard from queer and trans youth, black youth, and other youth of color who have been targeted, marginalized, and denied their right to thrive and live free by our ongoing investment in overpleasing and incarceration. As a result, queer and trans youth, black youth, and other youth of color are disproportionately justice-involved, detained, and incarcerated. We know that early involvement with incarceration has detrimental and lasting impacts on the lives of our young people. Why would we keep doing this to our young people? And when we are talking about safety, whose safety are we talking about? By investing in alternatives to policing and incarceration, we are investing in the health, well-being, and leadership of all members of our community. Please do vote to support the many other budget amendments that invest in community, like adding money for eviction prevention, funding the crisis response team, prioritizing the funding of a permanent men's homeless shelter and continued street outreach, putting more money into affordable housing. Finally, it is apparent that while the majority of city of Madison's departments have been facing broad budget cuts due to the economic impacts of the pandemic, our police department has nevertheless seen much of their funding remain intact. This is unfair. It betrays our priorities. And it is contrary to the local and national calls to defund policing. Please vote to invest in, rather than police and incarcerate our LGBTQ+ black and other youth of color. Again, thank you for your time and service. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Neil Rainford of Nob Hill Road, representing ASME Local 6000, to be followed by Allison Bellburn.
Neil, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself. If you take a look at your screen, it should be up. Okay, we can try to connect with him via email.
All right, so we'll come back to Neil, and we'll go on to Allison Bellburn of Mifflin Street, to be followed by Jesse Bellburn.
Looks like Allison is not present.
And how about Jesse?
Jesse is also not with us.
How about Lauren Byrne of Sidney Street?
Lauren is also not present.
Hey, Steve Berberg of Wendy Lane?
Steve is not present.
Erica Bach of Tempe Drive?
Erica is present.
We'll go with Erica Bach, then, to be followed by Cecilia Ackerman.
Thank you again, Mayor and Common Council. Alders, my opinion hasn't changed since I just recently spoke to you about the Capitol budget. But I do have some extra points that I would like to highlight. For many of you, I would love to, I think many of the community members would love to support the other amendments that are on the table tonight. I mean, there are many of you that are doing wonderful things. We're talking about, for example, in the Amendment 11 and furloughing, and how many of you are generously willing to do that. Hi, Mayor, Common Council. Am I connected, please?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. I'm not sure if you just heard my comments, but I did want to honor all of you for the time and energy that we've hired you to do and that you're doing this evening. I would love to be spending time and energy with you all on the wonderful other amendments that you're doing that do support the community. The fact that some of you are willing to voluntarily furlough is impressive. But I still can't help but wonder how we can do things like restore alder salaries, or fund resident and community engagement programs, or give money for COVID Relief Fund. All of those are amazing things. We should be able to do that. And yet, when Mayor asked all of us to cut budgets by 5%, MPD continued to receive more money, roughly $2.56 million more money. And we have people in our community, again, who are out at McPike Park, and those of us who are going to McPike Park daily to make sure that they're fed, and people sleeping in tents, and folks experiencing mental health crises. We can't even focus on the good work that you all are doing, because it's so convoluted. So for the, just as a reminder of the time I've spent with you all over the last months and years, just to uplift the values of this city, and for those of you that feel disconnected from those, they're on the website, that we center equity and civic engagement, well-being, shared prosperity, and stewardship. And that's what we have elected you all to do. So if it comes down to a question of receiving the COPS grant and continuing to fund the police, or listening to the people who are most impacted, again, one of those meets the criteria, and the other one does not. So the other thing that I'd really like to point out to you all is that we have this conversation over and over. It's been within the last four years that Common Council approved eight new officers and three new vehicles. Madison Police Department unfortunately does not stop the crime that so many people are gravely concerned about. The people who have shared with you tonight their experiences as victims of that crime also know that the police did not stop them from happening. So at this point, Madison police officers have demonstrated, I mean, the department on a whole has demonstrated that they wouldn't even pass their own risk assessment. It's a bad credit investment. And what we need to do is help them rebuild their credit score by showing them that we don't need them, that we can invest in other ways in our community, instead of increasing their spending limit. And basically, what this does is it extends this reliance on policing. It's a myth and a falsehood, and it makes people of color and black Mattisodians pay that bill, year after year, and decade after decade, and generation after generation. And that's why we have to remind you that Black Lives Matter. The downtown entertainment zone is really just a farce. You just heard from the Task Force on Equity in Music and Entertainment. They suggested less expensive alternatives for you all. The idea that we are spending this much money and not decreasing crime and not increasing the well-being or the shared prosperity, or the equity, or the civic engagement, then we have to ask you all to be better stewards. So I can't even believe that we're name-dropping black leaders and that we have to be, you know, white allies that run our resumes to you all. I don't need to be a good white person for you to fund black futures. When black people win, we all win. And you've had hours and hours of emotional labor given to you for free. So if we can, again, agree to oppose, agree to oppose Amendment 10, but also agree to oppose any, thank you, any, we need to agree to oppose any additional money from the Department of Justice, specifically when they allow a president to take foreign investments. We don't want to be complicit in that. Let's end our involvement and our engagement with the Department of Justice. Please, go ahead and oppose Number 10. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Cecilia Ackerman of Oak Creek Trail, to be followed by Jeremy Ryan.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much to the Mayor and to the City Council for listening to all of your constituents. I really appreciate it, and I know you've heard many, many arguments in support of the police and also for people who would like to defund the police. So I do not need to review all of that. But I am one of the people who are very concerned about the lack of support for our city wonderful police force. Over the years, they've always been short of officers as Madison has been growing. Right now, I'm living in Tamarack, and right here in my neighborhood, there have been three incidences with shots fired, people killed. You know, one at the park, at the Gardner Park, one at the Schregler Bowling Alley, and of course, the very tragic one that was here on Halloween, even with trickery children present. I mean, it's amazing what has happened to Madison. I'm a longtime resident of Madison. I grew up in Madison. And I love this city, but I really am questioning, do I really want to stay in this city? It's become so dangerous to everybody, whites, blacks, anybody. And I'm wondering, as I listen to people who want to defund the police, what, can I call them if my house is broken into? Or I see somebody with a gun? I mean, what do I do when our police department is no longer available? And I doubt if they're going to be available. And I don't know about you, Mayor, or the City Council. I mean, I don't want to rush into a situation, a shooting situation. We need our police department and our fire departments. And I employ the City Council to please, please do not take funding away from our police department. We are so fortunate to have one of the best police departments in the United States that is being looked at and followed by other police departments. It has been building up and changing over all the years. And yes, the police cannot stop crime. But crime is happening, and we need help with dealing with the crimes, protecting us, and keeping us safe. And I think one of the major jobs- And I think one of the major jobs for the the mayor and the city council is to provide safety um and to address safety concerns to their constituents. I don't want to go over a lot of the points that are made have been made. But please, please fund our our city police department. Do not take the million dollars away from them. I mean, I realize the difficulty of balancing a budget. I go through it with my own home budget. What can I have this year so that I can afford what's, you know, my rent or my food? I mean, everybody has to deal with the same issues. I don't think it's a black or white issue. I think um a lot of black people would like, are very supportive of the police department. And and I think we all need to be uh considerate of of our officers. It's deplorable how they're being treated by citizens and the lack of funding to help them do their job. Please, I am in support of Amendment 10. And I, at this point, oppose the um Amendment 11 because I'm not sure as to um what could be achieved by mandatory or.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jeremy Ryan of Odana Road, to be followed by Crystal. Uh it looks like Crystal Ellis.
Yeah, um I would like to start off by asking for video to be allowed. I know there were several uh emails sent to the uh on behalf of.
Jeremy, would you like to testify on the budget or not?
Salty Satya, come on. You said that if people sent an email, you could allow video for an accommodation. Now you're being salty and not allowing it. What's the deal? People sent emails. People asked for the accommodation.
I have not received, I have not received anything from the council office asking for accommodation.
Well, well, so what email address is it? Have they sent it to the Madison Common Council or are you just ignoring it? Uh well, hopefully someone gets an open records request on that because I know for a fact several people did send emails to the common council's general email box. So, um but either way, uh Salty Satya can continue screwing over disabled people. That's fine. Uh but onto the budget, uh we cannot be spending more city money on police. Police do not prevent crime. Madison operates on these statistical um statistical statistically proven falsehoods, like that throwing more money at police prevents crime. That's actually been scientifically proven to be wrong. That tear gassing protesters does not incite riots. That's been scientifically proven to be wrong. But the real thing that troubles me about these meetings is that outside of this meeting, it doesn't take much to come in at the end. It doesn't take much for conservative groups to put out a bunch of money and get people to come testify at the end. But every other meeting, it's been overwhelmingly against any more money for the cops and they're actually asking for the cops to be defunded, at least partially, and you guys aren't even doing that. And so you're ignoring the community. You can't sit here and say that you care about the black community and then ignore every single person from the black community that comes and talks to you. It doesn't make any sense. It's absolutely ridiculous. And so, you know, I've seen a lot of things at all these meetings because I have been at all of them. You know, I've seen Satya screw over the disabled every meeting. Uh but what I haven't seen is a single black person saying that they support any more money for the police or anything other than defunding the police and putting it in our community. Does it not trouble any of you people that statistically we are the worst place in the entire country for black people in so many metrics? You should be actually listening to the black people and trying to figure out how we can make this right. We have been pressing them far too strongly for far too long. And you don't just okay with it because you sit here and pretend like you care about the black community, but you don't listen to them. You create a budget that completely ignores them. And so it really shows where the allegiances lie. Because this budget is horrible. We need to put money into the homeless community. We need to put money into mental health, which is going to become more common now with COVID. Everybody who's struggling with mental health issues is having it much harder right now. And we don't have those resources in the community. And you want to continue funding the police at these levels when nobody, no, when the only time anyone's really asking for that is when all these Republican groups pay people. And I also want someone to look into the order of these meetings because I don't think it's coincidental that the people that were supporting it were stacked up in the beginning and the people that opposed it are in the end. I believe that that was probably the mayor switching the order. But uh I think somebody should look into that because that seems a little too coincidental to me. But either way, you need to listen to black people. You need to listen to the black community. Otherwise, you need to shut your fucking mouth and stop saying you fucking care. Jeremy Ryan, you're friendly neighborhood terrorist.
Alder Harrington McKinney.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I'm going to interrupt and I'm going to ask, uh what is the appropriate time to let the um the caller know the process for public comment? Um and so we can't just pass that by, but at some point, when it's appropriate, I like the the process of accumulating the names for public comment rather than stacking the debt as it was imposed. Um and the second thing of it, and I just must say this, is that um I'm an alder and I have a great deal of respect for public comment. And I welcome public comment, but it comes a time when we must say that enough is enough. And uh for me, it might not be for anybody else, but um enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh in response to your question about how public comment is um run now that we're in the virtual meeting world, um the public comment is uh taken in the order that people register. And so each registration is time stamped and uh we go down the list uh in that order. The only exception, of course, is when somebody joins a meeting late and we go back to them um after uh they've we've skipped them uh to come back to them. Does that answer your question, Alder?
Answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right, our next registrant is uh Crystal, I believe it's Crystal Ellis of Cherrywood, uh to be followed by Lizzie Bruno.
It's like Crystal's not with us. We do have Lizzie.
Right, so Lizzie Bruno of Drexel Ave, to be followed by Una Mackenzie Green.
Lizzie, you should be unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, here to say we need safety for all our communities in Madison, including our communities of color, black folks here in town and everywhere. Um we need you to divest from these narratives of white supremacy, no matter how emotionally compelling they are. Defund police, invest in community, no cops grant. I wanted to refer to an article by this brilliant scholar, teacher, sociologist, researcher, organizer, abolitionist, Miriam Kaba. And the I'm taking, I've taken just like parts of this article. Um I've taken some parts out to so it fits within my my public comment. I'm just starting here with this sentence, "The fact that police abolition is unthinkable to so many people is profoundly dangerous." It means that police have so thoroughly colonized and dominated our thinking that we're unable to even imagine a world where they don't exist. The fact is that we haven't always had police. And many of us, especially white folks, aren't actually, and this is me adding this in, but like, we're not actually subject to the um to interactions with police unless it's by our choice. And going back to the article, what makes us believe that we always will or that we always will have to? It's not simply that we can't imagine a world without police, but that we are disciplined into not having that imagination. Cop shows, other pro-law enforcement propaganda are an important way of naturalizing policing. Children's books, cartoons, comic books, Lego toys, officer-friendly programs in schools and other popular cultural artifacts, past and present, they all condition us into being unable to imagine a world without police. Cops are lionized in mon- monuments, memorials and highway signs. Cops are usually portrayed as heroic. We're told that they're the bulwark between order and complete chaos. Why does law enforcement need so much advertising? There are no television shows uplifting the contributions of childcare workers, but they are essential to the to ensuring the the functioning of modern society. If you care about the violence of policing, then you should want as little policing as possible in any form. Rachel Herzig, um Executive Director of the Center for Political Education, often says, "Eliminating the prison industrial complex will expand the context in which we can develop new ways of relating, build protection and address harm." At present, policing takes up so many resources and so much space that it actually crowds out opportunities for community-based solutions for addressing harm. Those community-based solutions are always under or unfunded. Some of these solutions are actively undermined by the police. We can organize toward the elimination of policing while we attend to our community's immediate needs for safety. As conceptualized by Norwegian sociologist Thomas uh Matheson, abolition is an alternative in the making. It pushes us to break with the current order, to refuse, while simultaneously forging new ground and building a different world. This is where hope lies. It lies in a vision of a world where we have everything we need to live with dignity, where safety is not achieved at the tip of a gun. We need safety for all of our communities in Madison, including communities of color. We need you to divest from the emotionally compelling narratives of white supremacy. Remember the thousands of comments that you have gotten calling on you to defund police over this past summer. Remember the recommendation from the Personnel and Finance Committee, no to this cops grant. Defund police, invest in community.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Una Mackessy Green of Rockwell Drive, to be followed by Elizabeth Brunner.
Hello, this is this is Una Maxi Green. I live on the east side in District 15. Um I just want to take a moment to acknowledge how intense the testimony has been tonight. I think the emotions we've heard speak to the gravity of your decisions as alders. Um this is in part about Amendment 10, but it's clearly about a lot more than that. This is about police, but this is also very clearly about race. And we cannot leave it to the folks that are here speaking to defend black life to name that. Because whether named or unnamed, race is the current that runs through all of the testimony we have heard tonight. The racial disparities in Madison are very clearly on display. The differences in the ways that people experience this city, depending on their identities, is very clearly on display. I want to go back to something that one of the earliest commenter said. Poverty is a policy choice. And we need to stop making these policy choices as small shifts of money from one budget line to another. We need to radically change where we are putting our resources because we do not have time to wait. We can't keep, we can't let these gaps in experiences, these disparities, this racism continue to grow. Last weekend, I tried using the county budget simulation, which is obviously different. There's the county budget, not the city. Um but there were a lot of similarities. I had to sit and click and click and click. It took minutes to click long enough to bring down the sheriff's budget. And it would be the same if it was the police department's budget in that simulation. But once I did bring that budget down, I couldn't believe how much money there was for housing, for healthcare, for ideas that don't even have categories or space in the current budget. Shifting money from category to category was not enough. We need to fundamentally change the way that we think about distributing resources. Defunding the police is an essential part of building a future that is safe and supportive for black, brown, indigenous and people of color, for queer folks, for disabled people. Only then will it be safe for everyone. This is how you put Black Lives Matter into action. This is how you make it more than words. Listen to the people most impacted. We need nothing short of transformation. This budget is not that. Amendment 10 certainly is not that. When you decide to make funding decisions that are essentially business as usual, you are upholding the racism that we see in our system of policing, yes, but in all of our systems. We need change and we can't wait. I'm glad to see some increased investments in community service, uh community services in this budget. Um but please know that those investments do not meet the demands of the many folks who have been out in the streets all summer, facing multiple pandemics, calling for change. Vote against Amendment 10 and know that that is not enough. I yield my time.
Thank you. Uh next registrant, actually, I'm gonna pause there and see first if we have any questions for any of the registrants since the last time we paused. All right, seeing none, then let's go back through the list and see if we have any of the following with us. Uh Tannen Stryver, Mike Thompson, Ron Gratz, Hillary Marley, or excuse me, Holly Marley Hension, Fred Moes, Neil Rainford, Allison Bellburn, Jesse Bellburn, Lauren Byrne, Steve Berberg or Crystal Ellis.
So we do have a few of those. Uh it looks like we'll be starting with Mike Thompson.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm here to urge you to accept the cops grant to vote in favor of Amendment 10 and to dismiss Amendment 11, which would be very harmful to the police department. The vast majority of people I speak with want more police officers on the street. I hear people saying that police don't solve crimes and by and large, or don't prevent crimes. By and large, that's true. However, we have to think about this from a standpoint of construction versus cleanup. We have those who are builders and we have those who come in and repair, maintenance and recycle. We have lots of money going for both of these. If everyone were uh angels, we wouldn't need police, and I'd love a world like that. The effect of criminal activity, the effect on criminal activity of adding more police officers really depends on the type and intensity of criminal conduct. For Madison, with violent crime increasing and with most of these crimes being committed by people who are violating the conditions of their bail, parole, and who are out on outstanding warrants, having more police officers to arrest these wanted persons would certainly help reduce crime. Of course, it doesn't prevent crime unless we're able to catch those who have a predilection to commit crimes. How many of the shooters at Schwagler Lanes the other night do you think were out on bail and violating the conditions of bail, their parole, or were wanted individuals in the first place? Something tells me a few of them were. If the police had been able to pick them up, perhaps those shootings would have never occurred. I live on Raymond Road, not Lake Mendota Boulevard or Drive or whatever those fancy streets down in Spring Harbor are called. We're here out on the edge of the city where the crime's happening. Here at my house, not too far away, we've had numerous assaults, burglaries, robberies, shootings, murders. We've had three in this neighborhood this year. And reckless drivers are a constant threat. Just outside my window here, I see a speed flasher. It's not uncommon to see it flashing so, you know, way over 50 mile an hour, people on a residential street driving 50 mile an hour, largely because we have no traffic patrol. Alders, Mayor, reckless antisocial behavior and crime disproportionately affect the low and middle income residents of the city. We're here on Raymond Road, Schrader Road. A 5% cut in mowing somewhere down at a park in Spring Harbor is not the same effect as a 5% cut in the patrols on Raymond Road, looking for people who are just waiting for the next opportunity to victimize somebody. Cutting the number of police on the street is a regressive, short-sighted policy. Without safety. Without safety in our homes and on our streets for all residents, how can we expect justice and equity to ever grow? If you truly support our common goal of a just and equitable society, then you must make public safety the city's highest priority. Please fulfill your duty to protect the citizens of this city by accepting the COPS grant and supporting our police department. And thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Next on that list, we have Neil Rainford.
Good evening and thanks for the opportunity to address you this evening and for your service. On behalf of the city's general employees represented by APSME Local 6000, we're asking first for your opposition to mandatory furloughs in the city's 2021 operating budget. And second, for your opposition to the layoff of parking utilities employees and support for the amendment to continue their service in other important areas of the city's functions. And finally, for your opposition to the movement of the parking enforcement officers without the employees' involvement in the study and transition process. Turning to the proposed operating budget as it stands, it leaves the city's general employees 6% behind the police and fire employees as of January of 2021. It increases the out-of-pocket health insurance premium costs for the city's general employees and thereby reduces their take-home pay. It fails to increase the wages in any amount or at any point during 2021 of those general employees despite the significant wage inequity that's developed in the recent years. It lays off the general employees in the parking utility absent the amendment, and it furloughs only the general employees, taking an additional 1.2 million from our 2021 incomes. These proposed mandatory furloughs are fundamentally unfair. They fall in exclusively on the city's general employees who are often lower paid. The mandatory furloughs create tangible hardships for employees who are already shouldering the greatest burden through inferior healthcare benefits, inequitable wages, a pay freeze, and the proposed layoffs within their ranks. There have been rapid developments regarding the proposals to amend the budget regarding the furloughs in the last day or two, and we definitely appreciate the Alders who have advanced amendments and supported amendments to revisit this furlough issue. Operating Budget Amendment 11, the alternate, advanced just this afternoon before the meeting, definitely goes some distance toward reducing the impact on the lowest paid among the city's workforce. We appreciate this effort and ask for your support for it. But we also maintain that it doesn't go far enough, and we would ask you to please go further in your deliberations on this matter when it is finally before you. And we would ask you to go further in the following ways. First, to set aside the mandatory two, three, or four days of furlough for the general employees, especially as an initial approach. And second, instead, to implement a 2021 calendar year voluntary time away program based on the program that Dane County has recently used. And the details have been shared with you in recent emails. And to do that via voluntary signup program before the end of the year where the results of it and the budget relief that results from it can be seen. And then finally, if any shortfall still exists in the needs of the city in the budget process, to use reserve funds or other steps to fill that gap as needed. It's important to note that we have not advanced and would ask that we not tie the question of the furloughing of general employees to the funding for the Police Academy specifically or other budgetary items that can create a necessary division. And we would ask the council to consider these items separately going forward. Turning back to the voluntary furlough idea, this plan was very successfully used by Dane County and its employees' associations voluntarily in the three years following the recent Great Recession. And it resulted in salary reductions of about 3/4 of a million dollars
Thirty seconds.
in a year. And we believe that especially in light of COVID, there are families that are yearning to be available to take care of their children and to help their children's education in greater periods. And that if we work together, this approach could be successful here at the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from that list?
Yep, one more person, Allison Bellburne.
Great, Allison.
Hi, my name is Allison Bellburne. I testified earlier at my parents' house. And then I drove home and because of the strong wind, some major branches of a really old tree in front of our house had fallen down. And trying to figure out what to do about it, we were informed by the internet that we should call the police in the after hours to let them know that this had happened. And I don't, why would I call the police about a tree branch that had fallen down? And it makes me wonder, like hopefully it makes you wonder, what else do we call the police for that doesn't even start to make sense to call the police for? Because safety, at least we know why we think we should be calling the police about safety. And that's because there are institutions that have been created to make us associate the police and safety. But tree branches falling down, we should call the police? So, I mean, because what you have is you have two camps of people here tonight. Finally, I see that the Back the Blue people, they come out for their one night, show us their little dedication for one night. And all of a sudden, you want to think that they're the experts on this subject too. But there's two camps of people right now who, you know, both genuinely, I do believe genuinely care about safety. They're here because they are concerned about safety. Some people are concerned about safety in a way that prioritizes their own fear. Some people are here because they study safety for a living and they work for organizations that do safety all day, every day. Those people also are represented by lots of people who have lived experiences of problems with the police. And for some reason, I could guess about those reasons, you're going to treat these camps at best as equal experts. But you're going to go ahead and listen to the people whose experience represents your own because you haven't done your homework. And so I think that, I think first, we need to take a moment. I think you guys need to take a moment. So anybody here who is going to go ahead and vote the way that David Blasko wants you to vote, you should think about that. That is Madison's most prominent white supremacist, and you're going to vote with him. And that should really, like you should take a minute for that to sink in because that's important to know. The rest of the Back the Blue people here, I know they don't identify as white supremacists. I mean, none of us do. But the white supremacy runs deep, as you know, at least in theory. But it's pretty clear that you haven't really analyzed the ways that it runs its current through your thinking in more ways than you realize. We have, you know, the people who want to see more proactive policing and are concerned about the proactive policing getting cut. Well, let's think, what is proactive policing? Because we knew that like in New York for a long time, proactive policing meant stop and frisk. And we call here, we call proactive policing, community policing, where police build relationships with the people before they arrest them. But even what you might consider like good proactive policing, would that look like? Like how would you prevent crime proactively? Would you like maybe give people like food to eat and a place to stay? And then like decrease the reasons that they might want to commit a so-called crime? Because that doesn't sound like policing at all. And in fact, it sounds like the same as the idea that we would call a police officer for a tree branch that's fallen in somebody's yard. Why would we call a police officer to help people get their needs met? Wouldn't we call people who are trained to help people have their needs met, to get their needs met? Matter of fact, wouldn't we just direct, cut out the middleman altogether and invest in those people and give the money to people so that they can meet their own needs? Because that's what governing without paternalism might look like. So there's just, there's two camps of people here, right? There's people who have dug into this issue, and there are people who are just operating out of a standard, pretty common, just white supremacist current of fear.
Thirty seconds.
When we talk about things like how we live in a culture of domination and how we want to divest from punishment, how there are somatic repercussions for living under these conditions, like most of even you guys who are supposed to be the experts don't even know what a lot of those words mean. And it's concerning, it's concerning to all of us that you are tasked with making these decisions that are going to affect people's livelihoods. You, like at the very least, can you recognize that there are people?
Thank you. Is there anyone else from that list present?
Nope.
All right.
Yeah, no one.
So we will go on then to Elizabeth Brunner of Oak Creek Trail, to be followed by Rachel Neeson.
Hi, yes, I am, I live in a neighborhood that's been surrounded by major shooting incidences. And I appreciate the police responding to the actions and being available to attend to this. And there are a lot of people that, a lot of police that had to respond, especially to the major ones. I think that cutting the police budget is uncalled for at this time. I hope that the council will accept the COPS grant and give the police the monies they need. And I am against Amendment 11. There are a lot of pros and cons have already been given for these issues, so I'm not going to repeat them. But I think that it's important that we support our police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Rachel Neeson of Lakewood Garden, to be followed by Sam Everly.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, so yeah, my name is Rachel Neeson. I'm a constituent and a social worker here in Madison, and I am in opposition to Amendment 10 of taking this COPS grant. Before I get into that, I want to acknowledge a couple of things that have been brought up by people who are in support of the COPS grant. So, or of taking the COPS grant. So first, I just want to say, you know, the number of people who called in support of the COPS grant is far less than the number of people who have been calling in all summer and the number of people who have been on the streets in Madison after having been ignored time and time again by the city government when demanding racial justice. Despite that, I do want to acknowledge some of the things that they said. So I want to respond directly to folks who are stating that residents felt unsafe here this summer due to the Black Lives Matter uprisings. In particular, there's many people who talked about downtown being unsafe with criminal behavior. Don't you dare believe for a second that these pro-cop white people are speaking for your whole community. I lived on Langdon the majority of the summer, and in May, as protesters and the police came down my street, there was nothing threatening about the protests. It was pretty obvious to anyone who was actually there that the protesters were there for each other. I saw people getting water for each other. I saw people making sure that everyone was fed. What was scary was the police. When the police tear gassed my street right in front of my apartment, that was really scary. When my neighbor told me that they had been hit by a rubber bullet the night before, that was scary. The police violence, which I, as a white woman living downtown, obviously very rarely see, but I did see that night, those nights, that is scary. Third, I want to respond to Amy Osinga, who was asked for her opinion on police reform after stating that she was in support of taking the COPS grant. So Amy Osinga said that she believes that we can have police reform by funding body cameras and training officers more with de-escalation, when she was asked by an alder. That has, Alex Vitale, who I think you should all look up, he's a sociologist of policing. He's been studying policing for years and years, and he's a coordinator of the Policing and Social Justice Project. He has studied this and he has shown us that reducing police budgets is the only way to end police brutality. Because time and time again, reforms like, you know, purchasing body cameras, training police officers, hiring more cops of color, these reforms do not work because it is the system that is built on racism, and the system needs to be defunded. Fourth, the people who, again, who called in and stated that they are in support of taking this COPS grant talked a lot about their concern about, you know, increased vandalism, increased car theft, stuff like that. Many people have said this tonight, but I'm just going to emphasize. Research shows that the only thing that reduces crime is making sure that people have their needs met. Poverty, addiction, mental illness, systemic racism, a pandemic where all of this stuff is exacerbated causes people to engage in more criminal behavior. If you want less car theft, if you want less vandalism, if you want less gang violence, show this community that you care about them and invest in people, not the police. Fifth, those who called in in support of the COPS grant, oh, just talked about that. I guess that's, no, you know what, the next thing I want to say is that there were a number of people who called in talking about how they can't understand why right now, of all times, people are talking about defunding the police.
Thirty seconds.
These people conveniently left out the names George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Jacob Blake, Rayshard Brooks, Walter Wallace Jr., Michelle Quinn. That's pretty disgusting, if you ask me. That's pretty, that's pretty weird that that was left out of those comments. If you accept this COPS grant, this COPS grants, you are committing to paying almost $600,000 more in policing over the next three years. And in 2024, you would be covering the full cost of these salaries. This is absolutely
And that's time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Sam Everly of State Street, to be followed by Ankita Bahadwaj.
Sam is not present. Ankita is present.
All right, so Ankita of Langdon Street, to be followed by Alexis Turner.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Ankita Bahadwaj. I just want to say for the people who called before me supporting this specific amendment that it's really weird that you are having all these opinions pro-cops. But when you were asked what you would do better, you had no answers except body cameras, which is actually kind of weird and moot and funny because body cameras only work in the absence of qualified immunity. So food for thought. Anyway, I just want to say that I come from India, and in India, we have separate numbers for cops and ambulance and medical help, which is something that we don't have here, and that is also some food for thought. As to why cops are called for every small single thing and expected to help the community at large. I also want to tell all the Alders listening to this that asking people whose best defense to how we should solve the problems for Black Lives Matter and Brown people is that, is something like body cams, which is not even foolproof, is not a smart move. I also want to add that there is a very famous quote by Dr. Benjamin Spock, who said, "Most middle-class whites have no idea what it feels like to be subjected to police who are routinely suspicious, rude, belligerent, and brutal." I also want to read a quote by Tanahesi, who said, "You may have heard the talk of diversity, sensitivity training, and body cameras. These are all fine and applicable, but they understated the task and allow the citizens of this country to pretend that there is a real distance between their own attitudes and those of the ones appointed to protect them. The truth is that the police reflect America in all of its will and fear. And whatever we might make of this country's criminal justice policy, it cannot be said that it was imposed by repressive minority." Another quote that I want to quote today is by Christopher L. Hayes, who says, "There are fundamentally two ways you can experience the police in America. As the people you call when there's a problem, the nice man in uniform who pets a toddler's head and has an easy smile for the old lady as he buys her coffee. For others, the police are the people who are called on them. They are the ominous knock on the door, the sudden flashlight in the face, the barged orders. Depending on who you are, the sight of an officer can produce a warm sense of safety and commitment or a plummeting fear of terror." I just want to mention that I have come to these meetings a lot of times and it feels like we keep on having the same debate over and over again. And I will say that I'm really tired because it feels like I'm running out of talking points because I just keep repeating myself. And it's not just me, it's so many of us today in the community that we live in. And this specific thing keeps coming up, like the specific matter is coming up for the second time. And I don't understand why people are willing to listen to people who not only have education in this matter, but also no lived experiences. It's like asking me for microbiology questions. I don't know microbiology. It's like asking me neuroscience. I don't know anything about neuroscience. With that, I just want to, uh, give up the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next registrant is Alexis Turner of Samuel Drive to be followed by Larissa Joanna.
Hi, my name's Alexis Turner and I worked for the city of Madison. I started back in 1984 and I've worked with parking utilities since 1993. I've heard a lot of interesting things tonight, which I appreciate the opportunity, and I admire the patience and dedication to listen to a wide variety of viewpoints. I've certainly heard a number of things that provoke my thoughts. One of the things I would suggest off the top of my head is that even though it seems to me, uh, parts of the budget are worded in such a way that they are unclear. And as part of our Madison inclusive, innovative, and thriving, that is one of the things that my understanding is we seek to do. And I have found myself in reading some of the budget parts, finding, having a sense of confusion because I'm not clear about what is meant or what some abbreviations mean. The heart of my request is I appreciate the, uh, supporting the adoption of Amendment 21 as part of the Finance Committee amendments. Um, one of the things that as a parking utility employee, I've worked as a lead worker, a cashier, and I've also participated in Madison, uh, ordinance analysis of parking studies last year, which I learned a lot about. In any case, um, I look at this funding as continuing, uh, to support the city as in our efforts to, uh, have a thriving community and to address some of the issues that we've heard tonight. Um, I find it very interesting and a great experience when I talk with people and finding out what's going on with them, especially when I can help them out in my job. Um, unfortunately, I feel myself going a little bit off, uh, off script. In any case, one of the things I want to let you know is that we deal with a lot of different things as cashiers. We work from sometimes 6:30 in the morning till 3:30 in, uh, in the morning, seven days a week. We have seen people being murdered. We have seen people commit suicide. We have witnessed fights, aggression. Um, we have also been attacked. We've also been there for the good times when people are, well, dare I say frustrated because they can't find a parking spot for art fair, Taste in Madison, football games, or even basketball games for high school tournaments. One year, uh, several years ago, on a sunny October day, when the sidewalks on Francis Street, 400 block of North Francis, were packed with children and their families going to see Clifford the Big Red Dog over at WHA, and it took 20 to 30 minutes to exit the ramp, I dealt with a drunk driver who was exiting and hit a vehicle on his way out. Fortunately, he didn't injure anybody, but this is some of the things that we encounter. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is, and if I repeat, repeat myself, I apologize, the monies that are, would be supporting our, or funding our positions are ones that we have collected in great part. We have collected them from customers, we have, who, we may be the first person or the last person that they ever see, uh, when they're visiting Madison. The other thing I wanted to mention is that this is something that needs, as mentioned in our Madison, is that, um, we have not been involved in this process, although I realize sometimes budgeting, uh, precludes that. Um, also I want to thank Alder Viver as well as Alder Campbell for, uh, supporting and co-sport, co-sponsoring this amendment. Um, and the other thing is we have been willing, where we have been able to, um, to work where we are needed. And whether that is in the middle of the street on Badger Road, helping people offload or, uh, deal with their stuff where they can drop off stuff, or if it is at the COVID testing center, which I understand one of the alders had over a two-hour wait to get in, um, to be tested. The other issues I wanted to bring up is I'm very concerned about, uh, under, I apologize, uh, number five, under the Finance Committee amendments.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Uh, the concern about transferring parking enforcement to parking utility. Um, I think this is very much, the cart is in the stall already and the heart, and the horse is trying to catch up. I thank you for your time and I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Larissa Joanna of Blair Street to be followed by Gazella Wilson.
What up? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, I hope you're not having a good night because I'm not either. I'm supposed to be celebrating my daughter's fourth birthday, but you know what? I'm here for her. I'm here for her and my older child, Gianni, who's five years old. You know why? Because we are people of color who continue to be the most vulnerable, the most disrespected, the most affected by everything going on. Let me tell you, shame on you. Shame on you not once, shame on you not twice, shame on you not three times, but way more than that. Why? Because you sneaky. You're sneaky by bringing this amendment again, when we are already defeated, when the community talked against it and told you how wrong it is to bring it up again. Like, don't you hear the people on the streets screaming with the pain in their hearts, with the pain in their souls? Like, this shouldn't fund. We have full-time jobs, we got full-time school, we got so many things to be taken care of as we speak. We got a life, we're supposed to have a life. But as a people of color, we cannot, we cannot because of you, because you continue to not do your job. Because we have sent a message out this weekend that we're not okay with hate, that we're not okay with racism. I am here today speaking now also in the behalf of Reshaping Madison Together, which is a coalition of different organizations, activists, and groups on the ground, doing work so that we can take all of the Common Council members out in 2021. Because you're not doing the work that we deserve as a community. Because you keep funding hate. You keep funding the police that keep brutalizing the people of color, the, that, they keep murdering black bro- or, or black brothers and sisters. They keep deporting our brown brothers and sisters. You keep separating families, you keep, you keep putting kids in cages. You keep doing illegal vasectomies on women. We cannot, we cannot continue to be, to be on the wrong side of history. Leave all the politics aside. Think about basic human rights. Think about that tonight. Think about that before you make that decision. Please oppose Amendment Number 10. We do not need more police officers. Everything I have heard tonight for the last three, four hours, when I'm supposed to be celebrating my daughter's fourth birthday, I can hear all these KKK supremacism members that keep talking about how, how much they fear and how much they scare and how much they're worried about all of these people, brown and brown folks who I represent and I am a voice to amplify their voices. And to me, it's a shame, but a shame on you. Shame on you for not standing up for us, who now we're speaking, who now we're coming out to vote, who now we're electing you to represent us, to protect us, to serve for us. Start doing your job. Please oppose this amendment, friend, that will bring more police officers in a, uh, three, four years, uh, freaking, um, uh, agreement with the police department to get them racist. We do not need more of these police officers in our neighborhoods. We do not need these people killing black brothers and sisters. We do not need these police officers collaborating with ICE, deporting of black brothers and sisters, separating childrens from their parents, taking their breadwinners out of the family. We do not need this hate in your community. We need opportunities, we need resources, we need everything that you can do so that we can try to be an example and lead not just the city, but the country by example. Lead them by example. Let them know that you're better than that. Let them know that you're not, that you're not standing with hate. Let them, let them know that you're not standing on the wrong side of history. Let them know that you're here to work for us. Let them know that we're an example, not for just, not, not, not just for the city, but, but for the whole state, for the whole country. Please be a leader.
Three seconds.
Because all of you, because all of you are up for election in 2021 and we're going to come for your seats if you don't come and do your job. So please make sure you refuse and oppose this Amendment 10 because we're coming for you. Please do your job. Stand for the community. Refund the community. Bring those funds where it belongs. Bring the peace back, back to where it belongs. It's always no justice, no plea, no, no peace.
That's your time, thank you. Our next registrant is Gazella Wilson of Morrison Street to be followed by Erica Ramberg.
Gazella, you should have a, uh, prompt to unmute yourself. There you go.
Sorry, I thought I did. Am I unmuted?
You are.
All right, great. It's Gisela and I'm calling tonight, calling in tonight, um, to strongly oppose Budget Amendment 10. Um, that Madison would be able to get four more police officers that reduce costs to the city for the first three years, fails to recognize the longer-term, union-protected commitment of support for these officers the city would be signing up for. And I've heard so many people tonight, um, talk about the increased crime in Madison as if those of us that want the police to be defunded or to slowly move to obsolescence aren't worried about crime. We are. We're concerned about gang violence and we're concerned about the shootings, but police didn't stop any of it. They may have lent a helping hand after it occurred, but they did not save Anisa Scott's life. We can't bring her back. But guess what? Putting the boys that are responsible in jail only increases the overall harm to the community. Poverty that got them there is a policy choice, so is the poverty of spirit that the police represent. How are you going to teach those boys, or the people that we call perpetrators, something besides poverty of spirit if that's all they're shown and policing continues that trajectory? How is that different from the environment that led them to commit crime in the first place? What criminals are is people whose lives have already been harmed. Jails and prisons where we place them reinforce resources to build a community. Madison has dramatically increased the police budget over the years and it hasn't reduced crime. There are so many guns out there, more police is not going to stop another shooting, no matter how many believe, people believe that fiction. People have said police are highly trained. Guess what? That's wrong. They're not trained to de-escalate. They don't have the training to deal with mental health issues, substances, substance abuse issues, domestic violence, or any of the many problems they're called on to resolve. Further, racism is inherent policing. I sent you a graph via email that clearly shows Madison is, has more than, than double the racism of policing seen nationally, and that's really, really concerning. Um, I know officers out there aren't all evil people, they have good intentions. I know we tried to solve racism in policing by getting people of color on the force. Policing is inherently racist. It's not necessarily the people. Yes, there are a few bad apples, but the whole institution is. I have friends who are and have been officers. So we have to do something to redirect society. And, um, yes, someone was right. Um, body cameras are not the solution. The cameras get turned off and the police are protected, protected legally by qualified immunity, even when they do wrong. Every encounter with police is a surrender of civil rights by both the victim and the perpetrator, both. The most vulnerable among us are not the privileged white people that you heard tonight. I sympathize and empathize with the fear that people feel, but really, the people of color who are out in the streets protesting have lived with what you're feeling. And they live with that because they don't have the resources and police aren't solving the problem. So in my opinion, so many speakers and maybe some council members a- as well, are misattributing the causes of crime. What is causing crime? A decreased sense of community is causing crime. Increasing inequality is causing crime.
Twenty seconds.
And that's exacerbated by COVID. So, and the resulting unemployment of COVID and kids with more time on their hands. Right supremacists are causing crime, increasing hatred directed at people of color. We're not short on police officers. We know that funding community problems that have been decimated over the years would decrease crime.
That's your time, Gisela. Thank you. Our next registrant is Erica Ramberg of Briar Hill to be followed by Nathan Roygomar.
Uh, it looks like Erica's not with us, Nathan is.
Nathan Roygomar of Arena, Wisconsin, to be followed by Chris Mackey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Common Council. I grew up in Madison from the age of three and have been an on and off resident for over 40 years. I'm a co-founding member of the Community Response Team and I'm speaking in opposition to the 2021 Operating Budget Common Council Proposed Amendment Number 10. We all know the city is in a serious, seriously adverse financial state in the midst of a pandemic that shows no signs of abating that will likely impact future city budgets for years to come. I cannot see the wisdom of continuing to expand the police force and saddle the city with more police FTE whose salaries it will have to cover once the US DOJ cops grant runs out to the tune of nearly a million city tax dollars total between now and 2024. The executive operating budget for 2021 is already budgeting 2.56 million more for police field and support services than the adopted budget for last year, a sizable increase while other city departments are being cut. What can justify this dramatic increase? There's little credible research demonstrating the return on investment of increasing the ranks of the police. Crime is simply not measurably reduced with more police, whereas evidence of adverse impacts on low-income communities, communities of color and the mentally ill, is documented in countless studies and stares you in the face from behind the bars of the Dane County Jail. The same can be said for police body cameras, a tool that many people have unrealistic hopes for increasing transparency in policing, but in reality, research, research has shown, are just another tool that police control and use to advance their positions, protect their officers, and further spin their particular narratives when encounters turn violent or deadly. Until qualified immunity is eliminated, it's not a worthwhile investment. As sociologist and policing scholar Alex Vitale writes, "We need to talk about justice as a strategy for creating safe communities that are healthy and sustainable, that have a future. We can achieve that not by driving more people into the criminal justice system, not by chasing people around with guns, but by giving them resources to solve their own problems. The money that would be spent on swelling the MPD officer pool could be far more effectively spent on social programs and direct community investment that address the root causes of the crime everyone who advocates for this amendment is so worried about. I reject these calls for essentially unlimited, unopposed funding for police predicate, for police predicated on a relatively brief blip of crime increase occurring amidst an otherwise decades-long decline of crime stats across the country, a blip likely fueled by the incredible hardships imposed by the pandemic, hardships borne disproportionately by black, brown, and indigenous communities." and Indigenous communities, both economically and in terms of life safety. Amendment Number Ten is about as ill-conceived in this pandemic-affected budget season as one can imagine. Don't forget that it failed in Finance Committee for good reason. Instead of shrinking the budgets of social services programs, divert these Amendment Ten funds from the police and invest in Black, Brown, and Indigenous community-led programs that address, that address the root causes of criminal behavior, not the symptoms or effects. Invest in social services that are better trained to focus on specific challenge areas like mental health and substance abuse crises, like the mental health ambulance service, and relieve the police of these unwanted and ill-matched burdens. By reducing MPD staff, you achieve a more manageable force level and more effective oversight of a simpler set of objectives. In closing, invest in community-led programs that have demonstrable impacts on the ground for communities most affected by poverty, homelessness, racism, mental health, and substance abuse issues, not timid, politically convenient measures that only have impacts for you at the polling booth. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you."
Thank you. Our next registration is Chris Mackey of Thorstrand Road to be followed by Fred Mose.
Hi, I'll make this fairly short. I just wanted to voice my opinion that I'm strongly opposed to cutting funding for the police and for cutting funding for training of the police. To me, at this time, defunding seems to make no sense at all. And at this time, there are a lot of people financially hurting and crime is going up. I think police are there to protect us, not to prevent crime. And that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Fred Mose with us?
Uh, no, we do not.
Okay. He had registered twice, apparently. So next is Matthew Mitnick of Brook Street to be followed by Juliana Bennett.
Hello, I'm registering against amendment number ten, and I just wanted to point out very quickly that, that this would create, as I'm sure you're all aware, the entertainment district. The, the alders in which this district lies don't even sponsor this amendment, which I think is pretty problematic, and it's in an area that many students live, and I don't think students have been asked about this. I don't think students would be in favor of this. And the PDF that went around that described what this amendment would entail talks a lot about calls for service, but when you look at the calls for service, a big chunk of that is checking people, checking areas, and I think that, again, we need to ask ourselves, what is the role of the police? What are we asking the police to do? And I think that anyone who votes for this is just disregarding the entire community and really just insulting every person who's come out to a protest and who's voiced their, their concerns with the police in the city. I mean, you have police officers who are acting as de facto committee members on various city committees, giving their input when it's not asked, intimidating people, and, you know, this is a national reckoning that should have happened decades ago, and we have a chance to be a leader and to defund a police department, which its department's budget is a quarter of the city's general library fund. So I think we need to really analyze what, what our role is here, and this whole grant is an insult, I think, to all the other city departments that are having to take substantial cuts during the COVID-19 pandemic, and it demonstrates that the police just don't get it. They don't understand. And when we talk about things like climate change, everyone agrees prevention is always preferable to the cleanup. So we need to invest in mitigation resources. Why can the same not be said for public safety by investing in the community, by allocating funds away from the police into affordable housing, into community-based initiatives, into Black and Brown voices? A lot of this crime that so many people are talking about wouldn't even exist in the first place, and I think we also need to ask ourselves and comprehend that the police drive a lot of crime as well, and that if they're constantly patrolling, constantly looking for issues and many times creating issues, it perpetuates these cycles in the prison industrial complex and all of these things, and doesn't actually actively benefit the situation at hand. So I think it's really important to vote against amendment ten and to ask yourself what you want your role to be in this movement. Please don't play into the political pressures from the police union and the grasp they hold over politicians in this town, and just listen to the community. All these protests, all these rallies, they're happening for a reason, because for so long, many voices have been left out of this conversation or still left out of this conversation. I mean, there's people who've been waiting four or five hours just to speak at this meeting, so I really urge you to consider that and vote against amendment ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registration is Juliana Bennett of Johnson Street to be followed by Eric Howland.
Thank you. My name is Juliana Bennett. I'm a Madison resident and current student at UW Madison. I oppose items four and ten and support items three and eleven. Based on my experiences and significant data showing divesting from the police and investing in community would be the best option to keep Madison safe through attacking the core issue of crime. My personal experience with the Madison Police Department leads me to know MPD is not suited to handle a number of issues we ask them to. I am a survivor of domestic violence. The safety measures we call policing overlooked my problems throughout a childhood of increasing police in my schools and neighborhood. During the summer of 2018, I gained the courage to leave the abusive situation. I called the Madison Police to help me after explaining my situation in the safest manner for me to leave. The Madison Police Officer said, quote, "We can't help you." I was not offered any mental health or domestic violence resources. The people that were paid to protect me refused to protect me. As frustrating as the officer's words were, the police was right. They can't help us. Years of public education in which officers claimed to protect students did not keep me safe. Years of increasing the Madison Police to budget did not keep me safe, and I can only imagine how my story would be different today if the Madison invested in community controls that address issues of domestic violence. My story is not an isolated case. There are an insurmountable amount of people living in Madison that are experiencing abuse, trauma, poverty, that are not protected by the Madison Police Department. A woman was literally kidnapped outside of the James apartment building this past week. MPD refused to investigate the case and was later found that the woman was experiencing domestic review, abuse. I reflect on my situation with the police and the lack of support in domestic abuse and sympathize with the mental health issues the police have exaggerated. Unknown amount of health, let's not forget Tony Robinson, a Black teen in Madison that was murdered by Officer that is still employed Matt Kenny for experiencing a mental health crisis. It is vital for you to understand that the police is too incompetent and sensitive and incapable of having jurisdiction to provide safety for the general public. Mayor Satya, I am so happy that you are here today, so I can tell you, your commitment to the police and not the community is outrageous. You decided the proper response to watching an officer kneel on George Floyd's neck and the subsequent community unrest was to thank the police backing the institutions that murdered George Floyd and the primary problem behind the resurgence of the Black Lives Matter movement. If you and all the, all the people here today can watch thousands of people get murdered and our communities continue to suffer from homelessness, poverty, lack of healthcare, education, et cetera, then you are not capable of representing the Madison community, and you have no business in claiming Black Lives Matter when you want to strengthen the institution that has led to community unrest. And I cannot wait to vote you out and any older person that is not in support of our cause. The current system is set up to punish those that the system is not built for, people that the police generally interact with. To tackle the issue of public safety, you must first address the root cause of these issues. I can only imagine the positive change that would happen if the 461 sworn officers became mental health specialists, educators, career advisors, eviction prevention specialists, people that can help the issues we face. Furthermore, it is insane that you are willing to defund every other portion of the budget, including healthcare during a pandemic. Police reform is not enough. Evidence is that, of that is clear, and I'm more than happy to speak on those points if you'd like to ask after due to time constraints. You must value prevention rather than punishment. Reallocating the budget appropriately will not only handle the problem of safety, but also help our community thrive. More police does not equal more safety. The evidence is that is clear, and if you are too dim-witted to understand or unwillingly ignorant
Thirty seconds.
to embrace these hard facts, then you do not need to be in a leadership position in the city. Investment in the community will solve the safety problems we face and create a city of Madison in which all citizens have equal opportunity to thrive. And I will say again that the reforms that we're talking about, I can speak to them later. Also, there is, the way this meeting is set up is insane, the fact that we have to wait so long.
It's your time. Thank you. Our next registration is Eric Howland of Gregory Street to be followed by Bob Schaefer.
Hello. Thank you very much for hanging in here to listen to me. I initially registered hoping to speak about Amendment Nineteen, which is a support amendment. Maybe it doesn't need that much attention, but what I have to say, I think, is also relevant to Amendment Ten, which seems to be where the crux of the matter is. Amendment Nineteen is to increase the funding for the crisis response team, the mental health first responders, sometimes called the Community Alternative Response to Emergencies Care. And I would just say that over the past decades, police have gotten more funding in general while social service budgets have decreased. And one way of looking at this, this current budget is that it continues this pattern with most departments taking cuts in their budgets, but the police getting an increased budget. What that means is the police become the only organ of the, of the community. They're the only organization providing, quote, "support" for the organization, I mean, for the community, because they're the only ones that have funding. Here in Dane County, the Mead and Hunt reports looking at the Dane County Jail reported that about forty percent of the people in the Dane County Jail had a prescription for psychoactive medication. This is an example of the criminal justice system handling situations that likely have root causes that are not actually treated by the criminal justice system. And so, and in the worst cases, taking people who are having a mental health crisis and putting them in the jail, which means that they consequently go into solitary confinement is, is a horrible outcome. Several people have talked before, and I won't, well, maybe I will reiterate some of it, but the, the idea that the police are doing a lot of tasks that they're not well-suited for, the police really, they're schooled, they're trained in a, in what one police officer called the soup of control. The idea that they should be totally in control of the situation at all times. And if you think about a situation where people are likely not to respond well to that, somebody in a mental health crisis is unlikely to respond well, and oftentimes, people in Dane, in, in Madison, people who are having a mental health crisis, whether they're white or black, have been killed by the police. I, at one point, I said all of them in the last few years, but then I, somebody pointed out that there were a bunch of cases I didn't know about, of police fatalities or police killing people. I would point out, though, that only about five, a national figure, only about five percent of all arrests are for serious violent offenses, and that's sort of held up by the, I think it's the IDCO 2008 Patrol Staffing Report that was done for the city of Madison. They had a chart of severity, in the highest category of severity was about five percent. And if you take the highest two categories, because they said one was very severe, or very high priority, and the second was just prior, higher priority, that's about thirty-one percent. That means that the lowest three categories of the things that police spend their time on is about sixty-three percent of their categories. So the police are doing a lot of things that are, that don't fall into the category of shots fired, don't fall into the category of previous bodily harm. And so, the idea of the care program, the Community Alternative Response to Emergencies, which I know you guys are, are supporting, and I'm
Thirty seconds.
Thank you for that, is, in that case, it will move more mental health away. I appreciate funding for that. It'll be good for people who are in mental health crisis. It'll be good for people who are not necessarily in a mental health crisis but do not need a confrontive kind of a response, and it will be good for the police because they won't be put into situations that they're not well-trained for. And, and I'll just say, I'm against body cameras if they're only used selectively for police.
Thank you. That's your time. And our next registrant is Bob Schaefer of Cottonwood Circle to be followed by Jack Phillips.
I got the button right this time. First of all, I admire everyone there and your willingness to go through this, including some things that I don't think you deserve to experience. I do support the amendment for the Ten COPS Grant, I mean, for the COPS Grant, and Kim Richardson, Gary Halverson, Wendy, Judy, and many other people have, have expressed many similar concerns. The, I, to my understanding, that this COPS Grant is for four officers and is probably tied to a future continuation of that. However, I'm wondering whether that also means that if you took this on and got this temporary thing, whether or not that that would allow you to make a compensation in the future of maybe adding fewer to the police force at that time and therefore not expanding the police budget. One of the things that is very apparent is that community policing, which got eliminated in some cases, gives more opportunity for police and residents to interact and work together to resolve undesirable issues. One of the most respected TV personalities who invested his life in educating children, Mr. Rogers. He felt it was important to have a police officer be part of his community and interact with his children. Many statements tonight are made about what police training is or is not, or what purpose a police serve in the community. Everyone's perception of police is different based on their experiences. You as our leaders are responsible to ensure the lawful operation of our community. The police are trained in law and effective measures of education and enforcement. It is unfortunate that criminal activity and law violations occur. They're also members of our families and communities. They are diverse in their makeup. They are charged with the protection of all citizens, which at times puts them in harm's way. I live in the East Town area since nineteen ninety-two. Sirens are regular on North Thompson. Crime has escalated to the extent in this area where neighbors are getting guns to protect themselves. Some have discussed forming armed patrol groups because of the lack of police patrol. Federal money of this grant is something that I don't think we ought to pass up, and I think that we ought to leave the door open for future changes. So I think that I mentioned in an email to you months ago that if you do defend upon, if you do defund the police and you eliminate them, that then I think all of the 911 calls need to be sent to you guys in order for you to figure out what to deal with. I don't think that's a realistic place. So we need to do what we can to keep our police force with the reputation that it currently has. uh, and with the reputation that it currently has throughout the United States. We need to keep them, uh, funded, and we need to work on also addressing the many issues that people have brought forth tonight in terms of, um, the racial disparities and Black Lives Matters, and, and all of those, they're all very important. And somehow, we need to come up with a way as a community to, uh, address all issues and concerns. Thank you again for your, uh, service and for your tenacity in, uh, going through this. And I'm, uh, gonna, uh, open and pray that, uh, you make the best decision for the community.
Thank you. Our next registration is Jack Phillips of Mills Street, to be followed by Tyson Battali.
Hi, uh, my name is Jack Phillips. I'm transgender, non-binary, and my pronouns are "they" and "them." Before I begin, as a content warning, I'm going to mention sexual assault. I feel unsafe. When I moved to Madison, I was under the impression that it was a welcoming, progressive city. But what I've seen is that there is a pandemic of violence plaguing our community. When I go on a walk in clothes that affirm my gender, I see dark vans perched on every corner. Armed and armored men with badges shining on their chests leer out at me. I am reminded of stories from my trans friends who have been raped by cops. One was raped in the middle of a city in a dark alley. One was bent over the hood of a squad car on a dark highway in the country and sexually assaulted. The men who leer out at me are employed by an agency that has murdered citizens of this city, and they're at peace with that. These men have a colleague, Matt Kenny, who has cut a bright young man's life short, and they are at peace with that. May, maybe the man leering out at me is Matt Kenny himself. Maybe the man, men who leer at me aren't NPD, maybe they're UWPD, maybe they're a federal snatch squad here to jump out and take me in for my political views, as they have with others here in Madison. Maybe they're an armed fascist militiaman, like the one who physically assaulted me this weekend while I celebrated Joe Biden's victory, or who assaulted several students with a motorcycle. Armed fascists who the police welcomed to our city with parade escorts, while on the same day, they deploy dozens of officers to arrest black and brown youth, exercising their First Amendment rights. The NIMBYs who say that they feel unsafe bring up very valid concerns. People aren't getting their material needs met, and a culture of scarcity surrounded by capitalist excess breeds discontent and violence. That is a tragedy. Material needs are not met, and crime is not prevented by the cops grant. It, uh, it is met through COVID relief and housing-first solutions to houselessness by investment in community spaces, by measuring just how much poison military installations in our community are dumping into the environment, and by paying every city employee what they are owed. Solving the root causes of antisocial behavior that has been deemed criminal is not what the police are paid to do. It's fitting, though, that Amendment ten does exactly what police are there for. It takes hard-earned money from me in the form of federal and city taxes and uses it to give a handout of armed vigilantes to guard the private property of out-of-state corporations. Pizza Hut is not your constituent. The racist homeowners, cis white folks of this town are only a small minority of your constituents. I am your constituent, Mayor Rhodes Conway and Alder Evers, the black and brown and queer and trans youth who have been demanding a future in a world that your generation has left burnt out and dying in the country that your president, not mine, Donald J. Trump, has turned into a fascist police state. They are your constituents too. Please, think of them when drafting your moral documents. And in case it wasn't clear, I support Amendments three, five, seven, eight, and eleven, and I oppose four and ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Tyson Battali of Dell Drive.
Uh-oh. You are unmuted. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Tyson.
Okay, sorry. Um, hi, uh, Tyson Battali, District sixteen. Uh, I'm, uh, registering in support, or talking and speaking in support, sorry, of, uh, uh, Amendment three and eleven, and in opposition to, um, I think it's Amendment ten. Yep, Amendment ten, uh, put forth by, uh, I believe McKinney, and, uh, I don't remember the other person, I apologize. Um, we don't need more police funding, we don't need to have more police officers in our community. It's not going to make us more safe. Um, I understand people are afraid, and, you know, they, our society has told us for years, uh, that, you know, more police or policing makes us safer. It doesn't. Um, policing and more police officers will not prevent more crime. It never has, it never will. There's zero percent gained in preventing crime by expanding the police. Uh, we should be looking at alternatives and alternative ways to defund the police. And when saying defund the police, I mean, looking at things that police just frankly should not be doing. Uh, things that aren't in police's purview and aren't even really fair to police officers, let alone our citizens, uh, for them to be doing in the first place. Um, the way we are approaching this, you know, the comments that I'm hearing from so many of our fellow, you know, Madisonians are incredibly disappointing, but not surprising. Uh, it's seemingly based in fear, seemingly based on saying, oh, all of this crime is going on, so we need more police officers. This is a fallacy, this is not true. Um, if you look at the research, if you look at the evidence, if you, you know, actually take the time to look into these issues, it shows so clearly that that's not the case, and that's not going to happen. So anyone saying that it is, is not, either doesn't know what they're talking about, quite frankly, or they're being disingenuous. Uh, experts know it, the police know it, uh, most of the public does not. Uh, the police do not prevent crime. More police officers are not going to prevent more crime. Changes in the number of police, uh, within any range or any practical range is not going to have an effect on crime. Period. So if we're talking about crime and reducing crime, we should be looking at, especially during a pandemic, and especially during, you know, such a hard time when it comes to, uh, the city's budget, not looking at increasing funding for the police. We should be doing a better job, quite frankly, in what we currently have forth. But at this moment, I strongly oppose Amendment ten. Um, and, you know, ask that we actually look at how we can prevent these things that so many of our, uh, folks are concerned about here, including me. I mean, everyone is concerned about crime and safety and all of that stuff. However, we need to actually look at how we're going to prevent it then. And it's not by funding the police more, it's not by having more officers. You know, you can put a police officer on every single block, at the end of every single block, and crime will just go to the middle of the street. Uh, it's not going to go away by more police officers. Um, you know, we can get rid of crime, we can get rid of, you know, or solve a lot of these problems, make them better by investing in people, uh, investing in social services and giving people resources to solve their own problems. Um, that's what we need to start doing as a city. That's the outlook we need to have, and not just the rhetoric we need to have. And so I ask you to please oppose Amendment ten. Excuse me for my rambling today, I'm pretty tired, and, uh, support of Amendment three and eleven. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna pause and see if there are questions for any of this most recent batch of registrants. All right, seeing none, let's also check if we have Tannen, Scriber, Ron Gratz, Holly Marley, Hension, Fred Mose, Jesse Bellburne, Lauren Byrne, Steve Verberg, Crystal Ellis, Sam Everly, or Erica Ramberg with us.
Uh, so we do have a couple. Uh, we'll take Steve Verberg, I believe he's the first on the list that's present.
Thank you.
Steve, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the common council, allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Steve Verberg, and I'm a resident of, uh, District sixteen. I'm, uh, speaking in opposition to proposed twenty-twenty-one operating budget amendment number ten and to the continued expansion of the Madison Police Department. There's a number of things that the Madison Police Department is really good at. Um, one of those is, um, arresting, uh, black people out of proportion, uh, to their numbers in the population. We've been saying for, uh, decades that we were going to do something about that, but it's really what the Madison Police Department does. So anytime you expand the police department, you're going to expand and not address the problem of racial disparities in Madison. Uh, thanks for listening to me tonight, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next, yep, next present, we have Crystal. Crystal, uh, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself or hit star six. Crystal, you may have a prompt to unmute yourself on your screen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so, um, first of all, I'm not going to thank you for your time, because it's your job to listen to us. And at this point, after all the testimonies you have heard, it's pervasively counterintuitive and disrespectful to the people that put you in those seats to prioritize the funding of the police over the funding of our black and communities of color. Um, our people need access to housing, our people need quality and equitable healthcare, our people need food security, and what we don't need is more funding for a police department to do nothing but terrorize us. Um, with regard to body cams, we have seen white people murdered on camera and cops get away with it. So that's, that is not a solution. Um, the carceral system is inherently and perpetually racist. Policing serves no purpose but to terrorize black communities and people of color and keep white people complicit in that terror. Um, policing is nothing more than a mechanism of white supremacy. And I'm like shocked that people that are, well, essentially, the people that are, um, advocating in support of more funding for police are essentially in support of white supremacy and, and propping up that system that continues to blatantly terrorize our, um, black and communities of color. Um, it's, policing historically, it serves no other purpose than to, uh, than to, to, to criminalize black humans and to murder black humans and to terrorize communities of color, um, through overpolicing. There has been countless books written on this, and either y'all have decided not to read those books, or decided not to pay attention to the data, deciding not to, um, read from people that have studied this, this long history of our country in, um, in using police as a mechanism of white supremacy to continue to, uh, to oppress, um, our, our communities of color. Um, it, it serves no other purpose, like, it, it needs to be defunded. Like, our, our community needs those investments. And, um, I think that y'all need to seriously, and I'm going to reiterate some of the things that were said at the beginning. Like, um, you need to think about what side of history you're going to be on. You need to think about the fact that, one, we don't need any more, uh, community buildings. We need life-affirming infrastructure. Um, we need y'all to, uh, to, to listen to, um, the people that put you there. You need to, um, prioritize those needs. You need to, you need to take money away from, um, the systems that terrorize our lives. Like, and at this point, it's just blatantly disrespectful, and like I said, counterintuitive to, to ignore the things that have been said to you tonight. Um, and, and that's essentially all I, all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else from that list?
Nope, uh, looks like we're back to Shiel here.
Okay, thank you. So next is Shiel Aikens of Fitchburg, to be followed by Ashley Trudeau.
Shiel, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
All right, hold on.
Go ahead. Yes.
Okay. All right, my name is Shiel Aikens, I'm a co-founder of Black Umbrella. We've been on the front lines every day, calling out everybody on this committee and some. We've been asking for y'all to fund our communities and take money out of the police budget, but here we are again, talking about this bullshit. Um, I've been a black woman my whole life, I have black children. I'm a Westsider, I grew up on the West Side of Madison. I have witnessed, uh, privilege and seen upfront the vast racial disparities regarding housing, jobs, and police contact in this community. Um, I'm gonna reiterate a lot of what, what was said before me. Um, I'm opposing Amendment ten. Uh, we need to prevent, prevent before the police need to respond to crimes. Never will you ever solve these social issues by using brute enforcement towards any community. There's multiple examples, uh, in, in this all over the world, where less police presence, and the more support the people get in their community at younger ages, um, less crimes are committed. People have been brainwashed into thinking that the police solve any issues besides the issues this system has with throwing away thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars, um, instead of putting those, those, that money back into resources to reduce homelessness, starvation, mental health crises, and other basic necessities that the community needs. Uh, it seems to me that this, that this city does not care about its citizens who are at risk for all those factors I just mentioned. Because why does a person have to beg you for real help? Not get it, and then when they go out and get, get their basic necessities the best way that, that they know how, they get punished for it. I, I hear all these white people complaining about, uh, being afraid of, um, people that, you know, rob them and, and doing, and doing things that they feel like they need to do in order to get their basic necessities, not realizing that those people that are, 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 are at that point don't have a fraction of the fucking privilege that you have, or the resources that, that they have. And instead, they ask for them to get arrested and for them to get locked up and ruin, and their lives to get ruined even more. Um, me, I'm afraid to go to sleep in my own home, justice for Breonna Taylor. I'm afraid to, for my black kids to go outside and play with water guns, justice for Tamir Rice. I'm afraid to get stopped by the police for not indicating to me changing lanes, justice for Sandra Bland. I'm afraid to go out with my friends for New Year's, Oscar Grant. And for y'all to sit here and say that it is, it is us that is causing the problems when the problem needs to be solved at the root, and that is, and with systemic racism. In every part of our lives, we experience it as black people and people of color. This whole system, this whole world was set to oppress us and suppress us and to be against us. And the white people that's calling for more police presence, literally, I, I want to say fuck you. Um, what I gotta say, hold on. For y'all to feel like police needs to be, more police needs to be in our streets, you are outrageously delusional, you need help yourselves. And your privilege actually provides you with that, uh, medical, medical assurance that you have. So I ask you to go and see, and go see a therapist. Um, Black Umbrella just spoke with the, uh, the Chief of Police in Manona, and he was surprised by some of the things that we, we mentioned about racial, racial disparities in our communities. Did you know that Manona has a ninety-eight-plus percent rate, um, a population of white people? So the Manona police that killed two black men had no, literally, almost no training on racial disparities. Doesn't that alarm y'all? Like, doesn't that alarm y'all? Instead, spend money on training these officers and getting them classes to really teach them and get taught by other black people and people of color. Do not get a white person to teach these white officers how to, how to interact with black people and people of color, okay? I don't even know why we're having this conversation when people, uh, that elected, any, all of y'all into the positions that y'all are in now are literally facing homelessness every day. Why are we having this conversation about putting more money into the police when people are facing homelessness, they don't have no resources right now? And we're talking about giving money to the mother, to these people with badges. They do not solve any of our issues. They respond after the issues are already there. So why aren't we finding They respond after the issues are already there. So why aren't we finding and funding programs that solve issues at the root? That's what we-
Your time, thank you.
Quit your job, Satya.
The next registrant is Ashley Trudeau of Johnson Street, to be followed by John Charles Newman.
Good evening. My name's Ashley Trudeau, I'm here to speak against Amendment Ten of the proposed operating budget, which would accept the COPS grant. As many people at this meeting have already said, policing is a broken system nationwide. Madison PD shows a massive racial disparity in use of force, where black folks are subjected to half of all documented uses of force by police. And increasing the number of police will only increase this violence against people of color in the community. Also, as mentioned earlier, the MPD budget has increased by almost twenty million dollars since 2015. Further increasing the number of police officers isn't going to reduce crime. This is only going to be accomplished through broader changes in community resource allocation, such as investing in services for those experiencing poverty, homelessness, and disability. And this isn't at all a new idea. Before the nineteen seventies, police were the ones responsible for transporting patients to hospitals in emergencies. And this was obviously terrible for patients, and police involvement was ended when EMT services were established. So we know that police should not be responsible for every societal problem influencing public safety. And continually increasing public, police funding in spite of their inefficacy in reducing crime, as well as their continued violence against black people and other marginalized groups, just shows an unforgivable lack of imagination. Reallocate responsibilities away from the police, fund these new services, support black and indigenous leaders, and start addressing these root causes. Madison has a great opportunity to build new systems for public safety, but we need to listen to the research and to people's stories that you're hearing today, and address the real causes of violence and suffering, rather than sinking even more money into a broken and racist system of policing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is John Charles Newman of Algomo Street, to be followed by Dejose Jablonsky.
John, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself. You may be able to hit star six if you're on a phone. We can reach out to him via email.
Okay, so we'll go on to Dejose Jablonsky of Drexel Ave, to be followed by Cecilia, I feel like we already heard from Cecilia Ackerman.
Sorry, Mayor, it looks like John might be unmuted now. John, can you hear us?
I can, I'm very sorry about that.
No worries, go ahead, John.
Okay, I'd like to open with words from a police officer in Madison when asked for their thoughts on this. "I feel that police have been assigned too many duties to help cover problems that they aren't trained to resolve or possibly deal with and process on their own, leading to badly resolved problems and stressed officers at best, and unresolved problems and broken officers at worst. Duties like mental health support and homeless assistance are the skill sets of therapists and social workers, not professional law enforcement officers. These problems are not always violations of city ordinance and require time that officers do not normally have." Those were the words of the, of the Madison Police Officer. "I question whether the police really need this grant, and right now, I'm in opposition to Amendment Ten. We want to prevent crime, well, crime is kind of a broad topic, and what prevents most crime are measures like more shelters and food pantries, harm reduction, substance abuse counseling, a fee-free ambulance, and more healthcare workers. And that goes for physical health, emotional, mental, social, spiritual health." I grew up on, on stories of good and evil, and when somebody causes evil, they get punished severely. But as I grew up, I learned to, I learned that our safety as a community is based on our security as individuals, our, our security to just life and happiness. And I see time and again where the police cause harm to that. I've seen at least two friends suicidal and myself engage with police in ways where it's just, they shouldn't have been called to that situation in the first place. The people that should be resolved, that should be responding to those things, would should be mental healthcare workers. I'm sure if the wrong thing was said in a situation like that, I or one of my friends would have ended up like Tony Robinson did. And I'm very glad that I didn't, but it could have been that way. Nowadays, I'm a community educator, and I see these small situations where the, where the world can be changed for the better without needing to smash it back into place. I see police officers as just one tool in our toolbox, but right now, it feels like all we have in our toolbox is an abundance of hammers. And I think that we could use a greater variety of tools in that toolbox. Like Eric Holland was, or Howland was saying, I believe, where we need to have more robust support of our, of our healthcare workers, and the other response teams. Yeah, I just, this, this seems like the wrong approach when we're cutting budgets everywhere else in the city, in the city budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Dejose Jablonsky, to be followed by Rob Timberlake.
It looks like Dejose Jablonsky is not here, Rob Timberlake is present.
Okay, so Rob Timberlake of Summers Ave.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to speak briefly, just in opposition to Amendments Five and Ten, and would also like to speak in support of Amendments Three, Five, Seven, and Eleven in the Operation Budget. Before beginning my, my personal remarks, I just wanted to point out that many of the participants in this meeting have argued against defunding the police budget by equating that act to immediately laying off officers. Many of these participants also failed to mention that the proposed executive budget eliminates zoning inspectors, public information officers, librarians, administrative clerks. There are people who will be losing those positions, those positions will be lost in the city. If this budget goes through, we could save those positions by reducing the funding of the Madison Police Department. I, I support the Amendments Three, Five, Seven, and Eleven, while opposing Five and Ten, but I also would challenge the Common Council to go farther than these amendments currently do. I would suggest that we continue to work towards a society where we do not need the police enforcing inequities within our city. And I would suggest that the Common Council consider which other steps we can take to, to support folks in, in their lives before, you know, by, by providing them with the essential services that they need for our community to foster. I, I'm, do not think that we can, or I, I think that we need to start taking those steps to, to build ourselves towards that society, rather than maintaining a status quo. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. So I'll pause there to see if we have questions for any of the last batch of registrants. Okay, and then to check if we have Tannen, Scriber, Ron Gratz, Holly Marley, Hension, Fred Mose, Jesse Bellburn, Lauren Byrne, Sam Everly, Erica Ramberg, or Dejose Jablonsky.
Yep, none of those people are present in the meeting.
Okay, and then we have registered as available to answer questions, a number of folks that I think are not here, but I believe that Walt Jackson of Schneider Drive in Stoughton is here and representing Ask Me Local 6000. Are there any questions for any of our registrants? Okay, if not, then we will close the public hearing on the Executive Operating Budget. And if there is no objection, we will place the Executive Operating Budget on the table. Vice President Abbas.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to do a motion to recess our hearing for Capitol Budget and Operational Budget tomorrow, 5:30 PM.
This has been moved to recess this meeting and take up both budgets tomorrow, starting at 5:30 PM. Is there a second? Alder Rummel?
Second.
Alder Rummel will second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of recessing this meeting? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of recessing the meeting, and we will reconvene at 5:30 PM tomorrow. Thank you all, have a, Alder Bedar?
Madam Mayor, just for the members of the public, could you indicate what that means, that we won't be having any more testimony, but we would be deliberating tomorrow?
Yes, thank you, Alder Bedar. So the, the order of business will be that we will, starting at 5:30 tomorrow, we will take up the Capitol Budget, and go through the amendments that have been proposed to the Capitol Budget, and then vote on the presumably amended Capitol Budget, and then we will go on, depending on how long that takes us, we'll move on to the Operating Budget and the proposed amendments to the Operating Budget, vote on that, and then we have a final item that sets, that authorizes the property tax levy. And depending on how long the Capitol Budget takes, we may take up the Operating Budget on Thursday, but that will be up to the body. So if folks are watching and are interested in the deliberations over the amendments and the budgets, tune back in tomorrow at 5:30 PM, but we will not be taking any additional public comment. Anything further? All right, thank you all, have a good night.